All right, everyone, welcome to the... I can't even get it out.
Budget work.
Budget work session, thank you, sorry. Can you... Sound okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we will start off with... Oh.
Rule call.
Okay.
Absolutely. We'll do Councilman Cobb.
Here.
Councilwoman Eagleson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
Here.
Councilwoman Eagleson. Noakowski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight's, this afternoon's invocation will be by Councilwoman Hopkins.
As soon as I turn off my phone, we don't want to hear who let the dogs out during prayer.
That makes me smile every time.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come here today to set a budget for New Corral, and hopefully with your guidance, we can do what's right for all the citizens. And please protect all the first responders and our troops, and amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't you get so tall? Barely come to your shirt. How tall are you?
Six-three. So, real quick, Randy, I'll hand this over to you so you guys can kick things off, because I know this is all about you, but you know, for those of you who have not on council, who have maybe not set through one of these or new to it, just, you know, again, Randy, Deb, Mr. Kitco, you know, everyone on the admin side, thanks for all the work you guys put into this. I know it takes a lot of time, headache, Tylenol, stress.
No sleep.
No sleep, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
They're 24/7, they don't matter.
I know, but I still need sleep.
And with that being said, I'll hand it over to you.
Well, thank you. Debbie's done a lot of hard work on this, so this is the year that, you know, Debbie did it, so really, all the hard work really goes to Debbie. We appreciate your hard work on this. We did meet the schedule and kind of go over it. We're going to do things a little different this year with the budget work session. Usually in the past, I just did it all, and we're actually going to switch it up a little bit. Debbie's going to take some of the general fund, most of it, and Howard's going to talk about his funds, and Fire Chief's going to talk about his funds. I also have invited, at the din there, is Derek Hutchinson. He is our current water operator, but he is the guy that I would be bringing on as our planning director. Derek has very much experience with this endeavor he is about ready to go on. He's worked for Fairborn, he's done some coterie rights for other big cities, so very well qualified to be here. We wanted him to be a part of the process today. So, thank you, Derek, for taking time out of your busy day to join us.
Is he the one guaranteed to work the $25,000 a year?
No, 23.
23?
Yes. He's a bargain. Bargain. He's a bargain. Bargain, yeah, absolutely. So, without further ado, I will let Debbie kind of take it from here. I will be chining in occasionally. So, Debbie, what was yours?
So, let me, let me first, by gurgle here, just to let you know, there's water in the back, there's cookies back there also, so at some point, we should take a little break in between so we're not crazy.
Yes.
So, let me explain the forms, the packet that I gave you and how, what it means. So, each fund, if you see the green on the side, that is usually all the revenues, though there's, those are amounts that are pretty much set in stone, that you don't change. You know, they come from the county, they come from what we've received in the past. So, those aren't numbers that you will be working on. All the numbers, all the things in yellow are numbers that you, we're going to discuss and work on together as a team to see where we go. The first column is the numbers that Randy proposed this morning, here, and then the second column that says council, that's where your numbers. Those are the same numbers that Randy has, so you can see what he wanted, but as we speak about them, then you can change them yourself. And so, anybody have any questions with this particular thing to begin with? Okay, so we'll start going down. So, the first page is pretty much all green, that is, oh, and the other section that's green is wages. So, wages is something, we don't, we know how much we have to spend on wages, so it's not something that we really play with either. So, if we have some discussion on how much we put there, whether it's grown from prior years, then we'll discuss that at that moment. But most of the wages won't change either. Okay, so, the first page is pretty much all green, and that's revenues and the wages at the top. So then, when we come down to the yellow, these are the amounts you can see in the 2019 column, which is the second column, well, actually, on the white side, the second column, is what we actually spent in 19. So, as we say that, so the first line we see there is training, travel, and transportation. This is under council. We have never usually sent anyone anywhere, we didn't last year, so we only spent $28 last year for probably some mileage, but Randy's proposed $3,000 so that you might want to go to some training for city council members, some meetings. So, that's why 3,000 is in there. So, I don't know if you just want to kind of only raise your hand if you want to change it, and then we'll discuss it. If you want to keep it the same, we'll just move to the next line item. How's that? Does that work, or?
Sure.
Is that okay? Okay, all right. So, 3,000's in there. So, we'll keep 3,000 in there, and we'll move forward. Okay, so, the next line is maintenance of facilities, and that currently has $2,000 in it, so that basically is for, what is maintenance? What will you use that for? We just kind of...
It's a catch-all. You guys don't have a home per se, so, say, maybe you guys want a specific chair or something for a council meeting that could go...
Yeah, so anything that, yeah, we need, we can use, like, if council gets new chairs at the shelter house, if we decide new tables, new things like that, maintenance of facilities is, you know, just things that, go ahead.
The last three columns, those are what we actually spent those years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, last three.
I have a question.
Sure.
1878's what we spent last year, right? Would we spend it on just a general idea?
You should have to pull a vendor report.
Yeah. You don't have to...
We'll get back to you. We'll have to pull a report.
I can pull up exact amounts for that.
But I don't need them. I mean, I was just curious what we spent on it, because we're at the shelter house. Is that what we would be...
Yes, mostly, I'm trying to remember. I can't remember everything, because the tables clerk that pays all the bills that come in.
We'll pull the vendor report.
But I can pull that for you?
Just find out.
And pull that?
Okay, I was just curious.
In the break, if, use a computer, I could get on and remote into my computer and look that up if we need to. So, next one, maintenance of equipment, that could be anything from when we do the council meetings, any kind of equipment we use, any of the, you know, the microphones, the, it could be the nameplate, it could be anything like that that we use for you. We spent nothing last year, but we're putting that in there because you are getting the iPads, so that would be maintenance of the equipment for those. That's why we put the $1,000 in there. The membership dues and publications, we spent $1,099 last year. Randy said there, he upped it to 1,500, and I'm, I'm not sure what all the memberships just...
It's the same as 1,500 you put in there.
Okay, okay. I was just looking at the next line, sorry.
No worries.
So, it's still 1,000. Okay. So, that completes the contractual up there, the office supplies. Last year, we spent $492 for council, different, sometimes we divvy up, like, if we, you know, paper that we print the reports on, things like that come out of there, but with, so we upped it a little more to $1,000 for any kind of supplies or things we might need for council. The operational supplies, we spent $777. We upped that to 2,000. Operational supplies could be anything from, once again, the operate of council, so anything that we utilize for meetings, sometimes...
Business cards.
What? Business cards, anything like that comes out of there, too. So, we have a little, you know, we've upped a few of the amounts, just so council, moving forward, the new things and the thing, now that we have seven people, there's things that might come up that you'd like for us to have at meetings or do things, so we just make sure that the money is here. And that, that's, I want you to think that along those lines for everything I talk about, because this is where we put enough money in there so that if something happens, we have enough. This isn't where we really cut the spending, because we want to make sure the money's there to spend, because we have it. It's there, we're just appropriating, it's saying, it's there, that's how much we have, we can spend up to that amount. If we don't put enough in there, what that causes is more legislation, more ordinances to go back to the county, change our numbers, come back to, change everything and do all this all over again, this, these, these reports and things. So, if you put enough money in to begin with, we don't have to do that much, and it costs us less money all the way around, even with an attorney looking at our ordinances. So, just explain why we've, you know, put, we pad some of these numbers. Moving along, $6,000 in capital outlay, that is, that's the iPads? Okay, there you go. Those are the iPads. The miscellaneous, I always put a thousand, I try to always put $1,000 in a miscellaneous account, because if a bill comes in and I have, I have $1,000 and it comes in at $1,018, I need the 18 cents from somewhere. So, miscellaneous just is a catch-all for any other thing like that, that maybe, maybe I didn't put enough in, you know, this budget for a line item, and there's, I have $1,000 to keep, to do that. So, that takes care of the council's expenses. Is there, anybody want to talk about any of those? Don't feel comfortable with any of those?
I've got a question.
Sure.
If we get the whiteboard that we were talking about for the shelter house for during meetings, will that come out of operational supplies, or?
That will come out of capital for parks, we'll probably take it out of shelter house renovations.
Okay.
And that comes later.
And that's really only depend on, like, if it's, if we can get something for under 2,000 or 2,100, whatever the capital purchase threshold is, we can expend that out of, so you can take 500 out of miscellaneous or 500 out of office supplies and do it like that.
Okay.
It's only that, that bottom dollar amount, if it reaches over that 21, then we'll have to put it into our capital, but that's just going to be a glorified smart TV, we'll probably get that done for 300 or 400 bucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Did I answer your question yet?
Yes, it was, and you are just amazing.
Well, thank you.
All right, you wanted to do your city manager?
Yeah, absolutely. So, city manager, clearly me. Wages, 85,000. I currently make 81, so there's a little buffer there. I'm not expecting, or would I accept any raise for this year, so, thank you, but that would, that I would like to keep the same. Medicare, when we look at the subsequent charges for the wages, we always has a ripple effect, so anytime that we do any kind of wages, we immediately have to go, we have to compute the best that we can, the Medicare, the PERS, the Workman's Comp. The Medicare, what we do is we just multiply whatever that wage dollars amount, and we take it, we multiply it by like 7.7% or whatever the case may be, because 1.4% of that is for Medicare, but then we also have 6.2% withholding of Social Security. So, we do have to account for that. So, when you see that in there, that actually should be adjusted, because that's not correct. So, actually, this is, yeah, the Medicare and city manager. Times 7.7%. That actually needs to be 6545. I think it's updated online. Let me see something.
Is it updated now?
Yeah, I think I did it online. No, I didn't.
I don't think so.
Okay, so that's going to be 6545, and we'll, if you guys want to make note of that. So, right now, it says 1,500, but basically, what we need to do is take that 85,000 and times it by that 7.7%, so again, account for the Medicaid and then, I mean Medicare, and then also Social Security withholdings. So, we do the similar thing with PERS, and PERS is a straight 14%, is what we are required to contribute as the employer. So, simple, take the 85,000 and times that by 14%, it's about $11,900, so we have a little buffer in there. Workerman's Comp, we really don't know what that's going to be on a given year, so we just kind of go with it. We look at our past history, and we see, you know, all right, past, you know, we 35, 32, so, yeah, 45 is probably good. You don't know what's going to happen, I could get hurt or something, you know, God forbid, you know, we're on a pool of that together, so we just want to make sure there's enough there, so we're going to go back and redo the appropriations measure, because we didn't have enough in there. Medical insurance is usually just a set amount. We know how much the city pays for that premium, so we can do the math on that by 12, we pay monthly. And then, the dental insurance is a set rate, and so is the life AD in long term. So, when you're looking at the total personnel service, city manager, it is the actual wages and then your, what I call, the fringe benefit. So, that's something that's always mandated by the states or the federal government, so there's not much we can do about that one. Training and travel, transportation, I did reduce myself, we originally had $3,000 in there, I did reduce myself down to two, because when you look at my history, I trained myself a lot, the best I can, with going to conferences, and never once have I went over 1,500. So, I didn't think 3,000 would be a fair price, so I did knock that down to 2,000. Communication services, we can look at the history, we know what it's going to be generally throughout the year. We do like a little buffer in there for any kind of unforeseen issues. And the same thing with postage meters fees, maintenance of equipment, and membership dues and publication. So, when you look at the contractual for us, we really didn't increase it much from years past. We do like to go off the history, so you can look at 2019 actual to kind of get an idea of where maybe that's going to end for 2020, but again, we do like that extra buffer just in case we do go over, and we don't have to go through the legislation process, because that can be lengthy and pricey. So, we scroll on down, any questions on what I've went over so far with the city manager?
Sup, sir. On your postage and handling?
Mm-hmm.
Does that also include the new water bill going out?
That, right there, what that line item's for is if I do mailings to residents, if I do mailings to business owners, and we put it through the postage meter machine, it comes out of my account.
Okay.
That's what that means.
Mm-hmm.
Anytime I misspeak, please let me know.
Well, his question was, where's the mailing amount coming out of, if you want to just answer that?
That's going to, yeah, that's coming out of the water.
Water.
It's going to be split between water and wastewater.
Knows that, yeah.
Yeah, the utility funds will take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Sure. So, materials and supplies, office lies, when I look at my history, I didn't need 1,000. I did knock that down to 750. My laptop's good, I don't need a staple, or I don't need kind of any big items, I don't see for 2020. I like to kind of focus my funds on the city building, moving into that. So, I did reduce that only by 250, but it is a reduction. So, looking at the past history, I don't even really come close to using that 1,000, so I thought 750 was a good middle ground for that. Operational supplies, we kept that at 500 last year, history, around 241, 240, 372. So, again, we just left it in there to account for any sort of buffer. Fuel, I do get reimbursed on my fuel, I don't do it as much as I should, but that is in there for the times if I have to drive to Columbus, or, you know, go multiple trips to Springfield in a week, then I may put in for reimbursement on the gas, stuff like that. But it's been the same as it's been, I think in 18, I kind of did about 454. I don't foresee that for this coming year, so I think I'm comfortable with 250. And then, we have the same amount for the repair maintenance supplies, which is 100. I did reduce my small tools and minor equipment by 500 to 1,000, because again, I'm not anticipating me having to buy any kind of things, because I bought a lot of that in 18 and 19.
Yes. Mr. Grimm, on your fuel, so, do you, I mean, do you turn your fuel in all the time? Every time?
I'm getting better at it, but I don't, I don't charge the city for a lot of the things I do.
I really hope and wish you would.
Well, the thing with that is, if you want to be very honest, it goes against my income and then my school loan payments go.
Okay.
So, if I go and I put, you know, I put in $3,000 throughout the year, and now my income goes up by that and then date, so you kind of pick and choose, it's a sad situation to say, but I'd rather just eat the fuel cost, opposed to having my school loan payments go up $100 a month.
I mean, if you're okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
One of the things that I, I would prefer to, this year, I'm not changing descriptions of line items, things like that, but reimbursement of his mileage would not need to, that's just a straight reimbursement that he's allowed, which would not hurt your school loans or anything, so if you want to...
It goes in my income every year.
It shouldn't.
It shouldn't. It doesn't. It doesn't get added to your wages on your W-2 mileage reimbursement?
Yeah, it does.
No.
Well, I think of how the cities does, because if you look at my paycheck, it may not, that would mean I'm getting a separate W-9 or something, right?
No.
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 It's just a straight reimbursement for mileage.
It's a reimbursement.
No.
Well, I also don't want it, because I thought I...
I just want to say that. I would want to know if that was a way to...
Last year, I was at X amount of dollars, but then it was way more than what I, way more than what I thought was going to be, so I just assumed the extra income was based off the gas mileage.
As long as you're okay with it, then I'm fine.
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Well, one of people used a gas card.
Well, now, that's what this fuel, is that when you bought fuel, actual fuel? Have you ever bought actual fuel?
Never.
No, this is where we're coding your, yeah, your mileage, so, yeah, then you didn't do anything.
Well, that's not true, because last year I got multiple.
Well, it wasn't, it didn't come out of the fuel line, is all I'm saying.
Gotcha. Okay, so where it came from?
It came out of travel and...
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm okay with it. I'm not, I'm not too concerned about it.
All righty.
So, what made my income go up last year?
Well, you got a, what do you mean, made it go up? You got a raise, what do you mean?
No, I know I got a raise, and I know I got that, but there's additional income that was in there.
Deduction?
Mm-mm, no.
From, from that to this.
I understand that, but it was higher than that.
Would you like a deduction?
No, you're good. You're fine.
[laughing]
You're fine. You are fine. All right, so capital, I actually reduced that, 7,000 down to 3,500. 7,000 was earmarked for new office at the furniture, it's a city building for me, I am not going to need that much, so I'd knock mine down about half to 3,500, if council's okay with that. And then miscellaneous spending, we have still at 1,000, I think, maybe, maybe it's reseeded out of miscellaneous. Yeah. So, miscellaneous last year was 995, so we did stick with 1,000 again. When we look at the reduction on the city manager side of things, we definitely hit on the capital, because I don't think I'm going to need that much money to outfit my one office. I can do a lot of things with a little bit of money with that kind of thing, so, and then we looked at office supplies, and then also small tools and minor, and also training, travel, and transportation. So, overall, the city manager total expense looks like it's about 135, 135,095. Any questions? Doesn't appear to be. Do you have something, Mr. Cook? It was PERS, that's what it was.
Okay, because I was going to say it's got nothing to do with your...
It was PERS, okay, forget it. We figured it out. My PERS wasn't...
Yeah, because reimbursement never gets added to your income.
Right.
No, you know, it was PERS, because I got cashed out for vacation. That's what made it go up, not my gas.
But you should get gas, you should do the gas mileage. It's part of your job.
Now that I know that wasn't it, I'm not lying.
It's part of your job.
Now I think about it, I cashed out vacation and that shot me.
Oh, okay.
All right, when you're ready.
Okay. All right, so moving on to finance, the section of finance, once again, the wages, overtime, Medicare, all those things pretty much stay the same, they go up a little bit if somebody, you know, depends on if raises, anything, sometimes if somebody gets hurt, you know, with, or worker's comp payments go up, anyway, that, that pretty much the same. So, going down to training, travel, and transportation, last year, we spent 3469. I'm required to get training by the, by the ORC, and so, with that, and we went to the SSI, because it was new software, we went to training, that's what we spent it on. Hotels are getting really expensive, and I'd like, nobody in the office has typically in the past gotten to go get trained at some of these conferences, or, so, last year, I brought Vicky to one, or, last year, I brought Vicky and Victoria to one, so, that's why it's 5,000, a little bit more than the prior year. Anyway, delinquent tax collection, those are just delinquent tax collection fees that we have to pay. Contracted tax collection services, that's what we pay CCA. Communication services is Bridge Group mostly for anything we have to do. We divvy up, when we get a bill from Bridge Group, every department pays for that. Usually, we try to divvy it up by, like that, so you'll see a little bit in communication everywhere. The postage, that was up to 2,000, because part of that postage, so, let me, let me rephrase this, some of the things that you see what we spent in, in 19, if it looks like we spent every penny of what we appropriated, you know, or budgeted for the year before, it means sometimes that I had, we had, we spent even more than that, and I just pulled it from somewhere else. That happened quite often. So, if I up the figures a little bit, it's because I know that we needed a little more money in that, from what we've paid in the past. So, if you go down there, the normal things, postage, bank service charges, I'm hoping once I switch banks that that's going to go down, but right now, we're going to keep it at that. Maintenance of facilities, we put $1,500 in there, that's just if we do this move, the six more months that we're in the building, if anything needs fixed or repaired, that's what that's for. Maintenance of equipment, we pay SSI over $28,000 a year for, to maintain our equipment, to service us for software, for support, so that's why that is that amount.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
You sure can.
I just noticed this.
You sure can.
So, I think we can actually greatly reduce that, because you're right, we used to do that, but now we put it in our capital, so we actually have 28,000 for software support in our capital.
Okay.
So, what do you think, if we knock that down, because I still, you may have a printer or something that goes bad?
Yeah.
So, I don't want to knock it down to zero, but I definitely think we can back off that 30,000.
Okay.
Sorry, council, I just noticed that in these numbers.
And, okay, do you have the new, I know we want, and then, if we move to the building and you want another printer, is that in capital or is that here?
It's already right here.
That's fine. So, knock it down the, oh, okay.
Uh...
You could do two, 2,500.
2,500?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
Get rid of it, yeah.
Okay. So, that 30,000 is going to get down to 2,500.
Okay.
And that is, again, prior to us doing the CIP this year, Colleen always took it out of that line item, but with its actual, since it is a purchase of the software program that we have, the maintenance of it still gets added to our capital. So, basically, that number was added twice. It was added right there in the maintenance of equipment, and it's also built into the It was added right there in the maintenance of equipment and is also built into the capital down there where it says 105,000. Well, it should say 795 for you guys now if they slash it.
Right.
We took it up 25. You want to go 3, 4? What do you guys think? Because that's like if a printer breaks or a computer breaks, you know, anything that needs repaired and finance, and that's probably a good idea to be honest with you, finance department, Debbie's department takes on a lot of the burdens. She has a lot of that direct staff out of that office. So like the mail, the mail machine, all that little things really falls under Debbie's budgetary, uh, line items. So maybe putting it at the 3,000 or 4,000 dollars, just to give you a little bit of cushion just in case something goes down.
And that doesn't mean, you know, we have to spend it all, it just means she has it if you need it.
Yep.
Right. I agree.
So we're going with 4,000.
That's really 4,000.
Is, is everything perfectly balanced out? I mean, if we add to something, do we have to take away from someplace else?
Okay, that's a good question. Um, not necessarily. Um, what I do at the end of this is I compare to what the county, what our ending balance is, what the county says we're taking in, and then there's the total. And I have to make sure we do not go over that total in each fund. So I will see that at the end of the day. Normally, I, as we're sitting here, I can judge by that, and we try to never appropriate, I use, budget all of our money that we have. As long as we don't budget all our money that we have, we can play with numbers like that, take in, take out. But I, at the end of the day, will make sure that we do not budget more than what we are allowed.
Please correct me if I say this wrong, but basically, Mr. Grimm, when we have this budget set, she has the maximum amount by the auditor already. So as we take away, it's usually probably good, but if we add to it without taking something away, it might put her over that amount. Is that a clear explanation?
Yes, it is.
So we already have that, but so as long as we take away, we're not going to go over that amount.
So revenues are a million, 560, and ex, general fund expenses are...
Okay, you're getting ahead of yourself and you're going to go say that we're spending more than what we're bringing in, which is a true, which is a true assessment, but we also got a lot of investments this year with the city building and then the planning department. And every year when you see that, we always underestimate our resources, our, our revenues, I'm sorry, and overestimate our expenses. So when you look at, and I'm glad you brought that up because it's a, it's a good thing. So when you look at the last page of the general fund, and we'll just skip to it real quick, because I think it's fantastic, Mr. Grimm, you pointed that out. So every year, so it's the second to the bottom line, I don't know if these aren't numbered, so street construction starts here and it's right here, and it says general fund ending balance, it is highlighted in yellow, so let me know when everyone's there.
Yep.
Yep, you're not there. You're too far in. About right, about, there it is. Right there, yep. So when you see like in 2019, so right below it says 2019 actual budget, right above that it says our ending balance is 1.1 million, okay? But every year, it kind of looks like we're spending more, but by the time that year closes, we always bring in, usually bring in more than what we spend because we, that's how we do with a budget, the overestimating and the underestimating. This year, I will be honest with you, we're not going to hit that, especially if we pay cash for that city building and we have the massive investment in the planning department. So this is probably one of the few years that we'll actually spend more than what we take in. So when you look at this history right here, and this 202 number should be black, it's not negative. So in 19, we actually, um, we, we brought in 202,000 more than what we spent. But when you looked at this 2019 budget when we were first, first doing it, we were actually projected to do more expenditures than bringing in.
So we can use the beginning balance to cushion any...
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, that beginning...
When you, when you, I hate to say this terminology, but when you deficit spend, which means you spend more than what you take in, as long as you have carryovers, that's covering your expenditures. At some point, if you continue on that, on that path of overspending, then your carryover's gone. So, but we all, you know, you've always kept a carryover and we've not tried, spent over what's come in, in past years, but this particular year, 2020, if we spend the way we're projected to spend for the city building and the different other items that are in here that will go over, it's cutting into our carryover.
So then the answer to my question is no.
You say that again?
The answer to my question is no, then. We don't have to take away from something else if we increase.
Oh, got you, got you.
No, it, it...
Cool.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Fantastic question, sir.
Okay.
But back to where we were, um, are we going to put 3,000 or 4,000?
4,000.
Okay.
4,000 in that one. Uh, we've talked about membership and dues, those can, and that's for everybody, you know, like he said, sure, if, if people spend more than their share in their department sometimes, it, everything comes back to the finance department and I take it out of there. So membership dues can, I have to belong to certain things by the ORC. We don't really get any publications in the office, but any kind of dues that we have to pay for the city comes out of there too, if it's not a particular department. Uh, moving down, office supplies.
Hang on just a second, I have one question, if you don't mind, back up to, I just wanted you to finish that section before I, uh, the collected tax services for CCA, 75,000. So this is what they're charging, or ballpark of, in the area of where, what they may charge us.
Yes. And if you look on, in 18, it was 88,000. Last year was a little less, 49, so I kind of went in between.
Right.
That's why I put 75.
Is that ba, is their fee based solely on how much is collected?
That's all.
It's a percentage, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we pay for certain forms too.
Yeah.
For certain what?
Certain forms that they print out, that they need to print out, like sometimes.
I don't want to get into it here because it's not the meeting, but I'd like to have a discussion on that sometime.
Well, here's the thing with that, I know exactly where it's going to go, but do we bring that back in how?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, got you.
I just, I just want to have an open talk about it.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing horrible.
Okay.
And whenever you plan to do that, if, you know, let me know ahead of time so I can have everything that's on their bill and have everything across the board, so I have prepared to give you all the answers you need.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So office supplies is 7,500. Only reason why I did that is because office supplies, if we move, you know, we, we are working out of a doctor's office, so you know that, we're, you know, some of us are just working on countertops. So I just kind of put a little more money in there so that if we need anything particular, are you okay?
Oh, forget it, it's a cop.
Okay. Operational supplies, that is anything from toilet paper to paper towels to whatever cleaning supplies we might need, any, anything like that for the city building. So that didn't, I didn't take it up much, I just kind of took it up a little bit. Small tools and minor equipment, here, we're not sure, once again, I know we put a couple of things in capital, but with minor equipment, I'm not sure what this, what we're going to be able to actually take from the city building to the new one, what we might need. Once again, it's there, but I don't intend on spending it if it's, if, if it's not a necessity. So, um, if you want to lower any of those, those are fine. That's just kind of, I kind of, the top two kind of didn't, just padded a little bit from what we normally spend, the 5,000 was added just because of the new move, if we do it. Capital outlay, it has 795 in it, and I think I'll let Randy talk about when we get to capital outlay because he knows what's on those.
Yeah, are we there now?
Yes, we're there.
Awesome.
Go.
So we originally passed the CIP a couple of months ago, we had allocated 105,000 for the finance CIP. Um, so when we do these CIPs, it's kind of our best guess effort. So what I am proposing with council's approval is reduce, we have a capital asset tracking, we got allocated 20,000 for that over the course of the next 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we are not going to need that. There's a software program I can get, it's all cloud-based, user-friendly, it's like 800 a year. Um, I don't know if that's the way I want to go, but I did reduce that capital asset from 20,000 down to 5,000, so we're reducing 15,000 off of that.
So which one are you looking at?
Yeah.
It's the capital outlay for, but you don't have the capital improvement plan. So basically you're just looking at that raw number at the bottom of capital.
795?
75.
Okay.
It was, it was 105,000.
Got you.
What I'm doing now is telling you the cuts we got to get down to that, the number that you see.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Um, furniture, we had 35,000 set aside for furniture for the new office building, we did slash that by 10,000. Debbie's got a lot of staff to buy for, um, but I think that we can do it on a better budget than 35,000. One of the places we do want to go look for furniture, having a going out of business sale, just about 75% off certain pieces, so I think we'll find some savings there. We also had 3,000 in for a printer, and I do want to take that down to 2,500, even if it's only 500. Uh, that's negotiable, it's a 500 difference, just trying to do the best with the...
Is this still in the capital outlay?
Yeah, so we had the 105,000, we took off 16,000. It'd get us to that 16,500, get to 795. So we do see a reduction in that capital, mainly around the software program for capital assets and the furniture for the city building. So, uh, we did see a reduction with that. Any questions or concerns with that?
No.
No, you're good?
I guess I got a question. Are we tied into our supplier for our software in particular, or do we have the option to, let's say if we find a better solution and a better price for our software?
Are you, what software are you talking about?
Any.
Well, it's a great segue. Debbie will be looking at, we, not to, I'll be very honest, a couple of years ago, we made a big investment with new software program for the city, SSI VIP, and it was a big investment. We paid 28,000 a year to maintain that software program. Prior to upgrading to the VIP, we paid around 22,000 to 23,000 a year to maintain that software. Debbie is very familiar with UAN, um, so what she will be doing is, once we get past this year, is looking at bringing, possibly bringing UAN over. Even though we pay, we just had that big investment with it, if UAN charges us, depending on what the yearly maintenance fee is, say it's 5,000 a year, we are literally going to be saving the 23,000 a year based off the two maintenance things. And at some point in time, we'll get our money back. We just don't know if that's going to be the route we want to go. The other software that I talked about, the capital asset tracking, there's so many of them out there. There's so many different companies. Do I have to go with, no, I don't, I can go with whoever I want. You know, you can do it where you bring it into your current software program, but I don't want to do that because they nickel and dime us and charge us for everything. You okay?
Yeah, there's students coming in. I'm going to open the door for them.
Just got it. Mayor just got it. So, um, we have some flexibility with that, but our current main software, we, we do, we made that a big investment in, but, you know, Debbie's going to be looking at maybe some alternatives. UAN is usually built for townships and villages, so I haven't seen UAN, I don't know if it's going to be best fit for the city as far as the capabilities of what it can do, um, but it's always something to look at. But again, for me, that, that decision to bring it to council is going to be how much their maintenance fee is. If they have a 20,000 a year maintenance fee, it, we'll, we'll have to think about it then.
I initially have, have spoken to UAN just to get some ballpark, uh, figures with them. They base your fee on your budget, the amount of budget. So right now, at what the budget we have, basically our fees would be approximately 6,900 to 10,000 a year, that's it. But they also supply the computers, they give you new computers every two years, they ma, you know, they maintain them. They also supply your printers that go with your computers. So basically you're paying a fee on, um, that is also included in that amount of money I said, uh, to maintain those pieces of equipment also. So, um, if they can, um, if they can take on us as a city, and I did ask them, you know, and they do take on cities of our size, so, um, I'm kind of, I, I'm looking forward to delving a little more into that because that is such a huge savings for us here. You're talking 28,000 just for support a year, that's a lot of money. And, and if we can reduce that, even though we spent a lot to get it, it will recoup that quickly. So it's a much, uh, SSI is created for any kind of accounting, um, firm or any kind of business, so it's a much more complicated or more detailed system. The one thing I like about UAN, it's created by the state auditor's office. When you go to do something in that system, if it's against the ORC, it pops up and says, ah, don't be doing that. It gives you, it helps you along the way, and, and it does all the back work for you inside the software to what is supposed to be happening. So it's a much more simplified system. I like it because I've just used it for a long time.
28,000 dollars a year, or a month for support?
Not a month, for the year. All year.
Are we using it that much?
Oh, we use it every day.
Well, it's, it, the support...
Is that like, hi, I'm having a problem?
Yes, that's, we, we can call them at any time, we put in a ticket, they call us back, you know, as soon as we can. Every one of the ladies in the office use, utilize it if we don't know, if we don't know how to do something or if there's a problem, we do call them on a regular basis. But that's still 28,000.
But do we use it that extensively? Do we call, contact support that much?
No.
Okay.
Would, would you say that on the average, we have two, three tickets or a service call?
I don't think they're charging, they're not charging us per call to do that.
But I'm, I'm trying to get a...
Yeah, sure.
Some kind of semblance of how much we've used.
And it's not just about the ticket calls, it's about the backend maintenance they got to do, they, they do...
The software.
It's software, it's, it's not just pick up the phone, that's not what it's for. It's for the backend maintenance that they have to do to maintain the software. They backup or, they do all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
So it's not just calling for help, but they do, but then they also charge you if they want to come up, so there's a la carte items per se that they'll get you for as well.
Hopefully in the future, we'll have good news.
Question made and answered, gotcha. How was school, ladies? You don't, you don't have to lie.
It was real, man, like, come on, this is school days, trying to get done.
All right.
So yeah, that's something Debbie is looking at, because like I said, I mean, we can drop it down from 28,000 a year to 10,000 a year, we recoup that 18,000 over the course, it'll take a couple of years to get it back, but, um, if it's compatible with other things that we do, then I, I would definitely present it to council.
And also, it sounds like it's more for a, a nonprofit, a government agency compared to a company that does, um, software for companies that make a profit, right? The SSI is, they do it for all businesses, correct?
The software, yes.
Yes.
Can be utilized.
And I worked, um, at Wright State and ours was nonprofit, it was fund accounting, is that what you do?
Yes, fund accounting.
Okay, and so this other software might be geared more for that, and it sounds like it's a lot better as far as a maintenance fee.
It's a Cadillac of a software program. A lot of cities use it, a lot...
Oh, the SSI?
A lot of cities do use it, but it is, I mean, it's the Cadillac, the Cadillac, and we've had some problems with it. I'm going to be very honest with you.
And, you know, besides the, the fees and the expense of SSI compared to other ones, when we had, when we changed to the VIP program, when SSI came in, what I think has happened, I think this program works, I think it's a good program, it works for a lot of cities, but when they brought it in here, it, the time of the year they brought it in and the fact that this company's growing by leaps and bounds, they didn't come in and make sure that this system worked for our operation. And I think they fell short with that piece of it, so that's where we're running into all the problems of trying to make sure that the water stuff's coming over right, that this is, I, I think that that piece of the puzzle fell short for them with us, and that's where a lot of our, we're, we're trying to learn, because even when we go online to, for their instructional manual for VIP, it's not even updated for us to learn on our own, just without calling them. So, um, Vicky has found that, I've found that, but it, it's a good, it's a good software, it's a very expensive software, but it's a good one, and it works for a lot of cities. I'm not saying it can't, but it, it's not working for us quite yet.
Do you have something, Mr. Cobb?
No, we're...
Okay.
You sure?
Are all of our programs, are all of our departments on this software?
No, that's the other problem. When, when you bought the software, um, before I came, only myself and payables and payroll came onto VIP. All the cash for the water, everything we bring in on that other side is still doing the old software from SSI, which is called eGov. So trying to put the two together is, has been, you know, a learning experience for us to try to make them mesh, but yes, it's just, um...
When Colleen presented, it was supposed to be a phased-in thing. We did a certain Colleen's first, and then we did some other things, and then year two, year three was going to be the subsequent ones. They're still compatible, they still work. It's not like they don't communicate, because it was such a long-term expense. But once we had started having issues with it, we decided we're not going to make the investment on those stuff until we figure out, is it a user problem or is it a system problem? And we're, you know, still getting through all this, but that's why we're starting to look at other options, just because, um, again, if we can save ourselves a yearly fee on that maintenance, then, and something a little more user-friendly perhaps.
Have we got a target date that we could possibly outline? I mean, are we six months down the road or are we four months or...
I, I don't, we don't have a pinpoint date, no. We don't even, I got to look at the current agreement that we have with SSI to see if we even can get out of, getting, can get out of it within X amount of years. So it's there because we have to pay it for this year, but we're letting you know we are looking at different options. But to say it could happen this year, we don't know. We don't know. I don't think so, but that's what we're going to do, contract review, before we make that final call, we'll definitely worry about that. But I'm happy to see that you guys are open to us changing. Uh, we appreciate that, especially if it saves money, because we were trying to bounce around, you know, best ways to present it to council with the investment that we just did a couple of years ago. But again, if we can save 20, 18,000, 20,000 a year on maintenance fees, it should recoup itself.
And frustration with the staff.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um, we'll definitely keep you posted with that. Anything we do with that will probably go in form of a, a legislation piece to council. And when we do, if not, I'll definitely keep you posted though with that.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, miscellaneous again, 1,000, the refunds from the income tax, that's what we just, um, when people file their income tax returns and they deserve refunds, that's the number it is. So last year we did about 63,500, and I thought, well, let's make sure there's enough money in there to cover those. That takes us down to planning.
Planning.
And I think you want to take that.
Yes.
You wanna do it? Derek, you jump right in, Derek.
Yeah, we're supposed to start with Howie's funds today.
I'll take control shortly.
It's fine.
If you wanna take the, at least the wage part, the first part, I can jump into.
We're gonna do a complete game of plan because actually we should have started with Howie's funds first today because Howie will have some meetings tomorrow. So we're not sure if Howie can come. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna say, hey, we stopped the general fund and finance.
Planning.
Planning, we're gonna, we'll stop the finance, begin in planning. No worries. And what we do is keep on flipping your page there. We're gonna get through the general fund and we're gonna stop to where we have the street construction. So basically when I was referencing Mr. Grimm's question about the ending fund balances, we're gonna start pickup right there. And then Howie, Mr. Kiko. Oh, we gonna start with parks first? Okay, now I'm confusing me even more. Go back to parks, it's in with your general fund. So, no, it's all right. So you wanna be, parks is basically the one page after where we just left off. So planning, one more page, Mr. Cobb. Boom, parks. Down there at the bottom.
Bottom of the page.
Bottom of the page, everyone on there? We're good? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kiko.
All right, under parks, you'll have your first part, it's your wages and benefits. Of course, wages and benefits for this is a portion of Greg Slattery, our public works superintendent. And then seasonal employment, which we do have a fairly basically a year-round seasonal. And then we bring on a second when we can keep somebody in to do park maintenance, mow, that type of thing. And of course, as they had said earlier, most of the French benefits are percentages of those wages. And you look at past history, we kinda just, you know, stay rate about that same amount. We did cushion a little bit because if we do a wage, minimum wage increase or anything like that, that'll definitely cover that. Down to, there's really not much training, travel or CDL testing out of parks, so we do not have a dedicated person to that. Most of the other departments will take care of those for those employees. Anything that's down under contractual, most of your gas, your maintenance of facilities, infrastructure, equipment, those are things at Shelter House. It will pay for gas, electricity, lights that are in the parks. Maintenance of facilities can be anything that would be cutting trees down, fixing some things at the shelter house. Equipment could be fixing the mowers. Anything that you would see a park person use or we would take care of the parks. And then insurance and fleet, things like that, those are the insurance costs for our equipment that we have through our liability. Membership dues and publications, that is. We do have a certified pesticide person and that is Greg Slattery. Government agencies are required to have that. And typically this is where this portion is small and supplies and materials, office supplies, operational, you know, they're small. There's not much that type of stuff that goes on in, in parks. Fuel and repair and maintenance supplies, small tools. Fuel for mowers, fuel for weed eaters, repair and maintain the equipment, chainsaws, you know, help with tree cutting. Capital outlay, and I just went blank on that. For capital outlay.
Someone I amended.
It is, yes. It was at, oh, never mind. 31,500, so we had made some adjustments. And you might, can you help me out with the parks on what we, we did on those for capital outlay and what we cut?
Yeah, yeah, so we originally, you got it?
Yeah, we, our utility cart and wood chipper that we initially put in the budget, we're gonna hold off on that to be able to keep the few other things like the shelter house additions and upgrades, playground equipment, fall protection. Mr. Bridge works annually on possible grant funding and needing some matching funds that will be utilized for that. And then park upgrades. You know, if we have a barbecue grill that breaks, we'll upgrade that, benches, things like that, we'll keep those. And then we will be replacing one of our 2001 or 2002 mowers this year with a mower. We tried to buy it, was in last year's CIP, but the one that we wanted was not available. And that's why we're trying early in the year to get that available mower that we want. So that takes our capital cost for the parks with shelter house renovations down to 91,500. And then of course, as I stated before, miscellaneous, there's a catch-all for 1,000. Do you have any questions with the parks? And the parks is under the general fund, so its revenue comes from general fund revenues.
In the CIP, we originally passed a measure for 129,000. So when I was looking at that last night, given the budget number I was looking at, you're making a big investment in your parks. So we have $60,000 set aside for shelter house renovations and upgrades. You have $15,000 for playground equipment, again, 4,000 for park upgrades. So when you look at something that you can possibly put off to 2021 to help that bottom dollar line is utility cart and wood chipper. I spoke with Mr. Kiko about that. As long as we have the mower in there for next year, he will be satisfied with that. That is just a recommendation, council can choose to keep it in. But my recommendation, given the amount of massive investments we're doing in 2020, some things we should be able to put off if we can. Since it's not a necessarily operational functional needed thing at this point in time, I am recommending that be put off to 2021. And again, that is just the utility cart and wood chipper. If not, then your capital for that line is gonna go back up to 129,000.
Under that shelter house renovation, are we still anticipating the parking lot renovations out there in front, in that circle and not the drive?
Can I read you the definition on the CIP? It says shelter house upgrade addition, improved parking, a two-six flooring tables, chairs, kitchenette addition, technology upgrades and/or general aesthetics of the building in 2020. So that catches all, you know, depending on how we decide to lay that parking lot out is, will become through Mr. Kiko's observation.
Not the drive.
The and or is in there. You know, so I know there's some debate about the kitchenette. You guys wanna do addition outside? I know there's some things we wanna do acoustically that we had to put off in last year. So there's a lot going on with that shelter house upgrade, which is why it's 60.
I know Parks and Recreation wanted to do that other parking lot of Washington, but that's not included in this, am I correct?
I believe the asphalt area is still the rectangle area. I was unaware, I was not understanding what she was referencing outside of that rectangular area. It's at the dead end of Deerfield at Washington. Is there something else outside of that?
No, I think where she, yeah, because when she mentioned it, I was kinda, which I mean, it may have been there before, but the way I understood it, she was saying that there was that one square where you're talking about and made it sound like it drove up.
There used to be like a, two ruts that used to go up in there, but I'm not aware of any kind of.
There is a cement pad on Washington that a food truck goes in there sometime and that's what I think she wants to expand. But when we were talking, but I think we're talking about it, given how the funds were looking out, that we could gravel it for the first year or two and then go and get barrier fencing to put around like a stump with wires that go through it, just to keep costs down. So they, Parks and Rec wanna do that and they attempt that when the park is full of people, there'll be additional parking. So what I would suggest council do is kinda see how they do this year, to be quite honest with you. What is, I mean, you're looking at maybe 10 spots out there. I don't know how much they can get from being out there. So what's, I mean, if you're gonna spend $20,000 on a parking lot, is it worth spending $20,000 on a parking lot to get 10 additional spots?
Well, I think the most, one of the most important things right off the bat is getting at least marked the handicap parking.
In the front of the main shelter house.
Right, I mean, because that's.
Yes, and that's what we have allocated for.
Right. And because we don't have that marked at all.
No, it's not. And we may be able to expand the parking just based off that. But I think their need was just for people walking in from the other side can have a place to go.
The way I understood her, incorrect if I'm wrong.
Oh, no, please go ahead.
She wanted to build a setup off of Washington to come up to the back towards the woods.
She did, yeah, you're right, because I like that area for.
By the swing set, the old set swings? Okay, okay.
That's what I interpreted.
That sounds more familiar.
Because I'd send, I'd send over just a drawing one time, just to give you an idea what that would look like. I mean, I don't know if it would work.
But that's dangerous up there if you put parking up there with that playground or the, yeah, the swings in there. That's too close.
Yeah, somebody could lose control of their car and hit somebody or.
Yeah, I think, because I was there, I said that'd be a good place to put additional picnic tables because it's kinda shaded.
Yeah.
There.
Did we have anything in the CIP for parks as far as New Collin Park? Anything dedicated? I can't remember.
Well, that's, it's not dedicated to a particular park. It has fine items for like playground.
Right, I just didn't know if we had said anything for exactly New Collin Park.
That's one by Dollar.
Yeah, behind Dollar General.
And that's probably one we're gonna focus on more than likely this year. I need to figure out what that grant funding is looking like on their end. I know there's talk about we want to put what we call wayfinding markers on a bike path. So I don't know how much that's going to take for the grant money and what that is. They put something on that, it could be a sign, it could be whatever, and if you're walking, you get hurt. It's like a thing of a mile mark on a highway, essentially what it is. So I still don't have that figured out because I haven't been able to touch base with Ashley, who's a grant coordinator for that. But yeah, I think we've already discussed, besides the bike path that there's going on, a lot of the improvements going on at that park. Did you say parks includes the cemetery?
No.
That's separate?
That'll be one, that'll be the next to last one that I do. It's completely separate.
I'll sit quiet.
You're not even hurry to get to the cemetery, are you?
Any more questions on parks? If you flip that page and two more, that will take you to street construction, which will be down at the, almost at the very bottom of the page. It will be Fund 201. Can everybody find it? Okay. All right, street construction, 201 is our fund where we receive motor vehicle license revenue and state gasoline tax revenue. As you're aware, the, with the increased gas tax, we did see an increase in 19 and it did increase our estimated resources for 2020. So this was a huge bonus for this 201 fund. And you'll see as we go down through some of the improvements that we were able to do with this additional. The beginning fund balance, it was left from 2019, was approximately 134,000. And including the new motor vehicle and state gasoline tax, you are sitting at about 342,922.
Where are you reading that, Howie? Making sure.
Very bottom line.
Read the very bottom line of the street construction.
It says intergovernmental, off to the right of that.
Okay, you were right. Okay, sorry.
That's, that's okay. Go ahead and flip your page. And then outside of miscellaneous receipts, your total construction revenue with that carryover will be 343,422. So with those revenues, we are looking to spend those with the next section, which is your wages and benefits. Wages for this is four people, which is Greg Slattery, Ron Wright, Dave Coleman and Tracy Shopshire, which are the employees. And then you have your overtime wages and then according to their benefits. Typically you'll see that the one that really sticks out is your medical insurance. We plan for family plans for all our employees, just in case all the hires that we have have that. It is a lot of legislation and changes to adjust if we have four singles and then all of a sudden we get four families. So we just kinda keep that up there. So your wages and benefits are coming in at 225,850. Training, travel, you got 1,000, CDL testing, this is where the four employees, those four, if they're due for CDL testing that year or they're taking additional endorsements, that's where those, that funds will be expended. The next one's your contractual, gas, communications, maintenance of your facility, maintenance of equipment, your insurance for those vehicles. For those, it's the Quonset hut. That's really our only street building that we pay for gas, electric services, communications, cell phone, landline, any kind of goes towards that line item. Facilities, infrastructure and equipment. Basically, these three line items have always been really small in the past years and have been hesitant to spend those because of ending fund balance. This year, we really wanna put a lot more to try and, not a lot more, but keep the facilities up and not fall apart because you know the hut is old. The goal would be someday to have a new style, rent, just another building to get into. Infrastructure and equipment, we're, again, we're gonna put a little bit more money into our existing equipment. Just try to keep the things we got and bring those back up to a, into a path that is more useful for us and keep those items in great shape. And then you move down to the next items of materials and supplies. These are office supplies, operational supplies, uniforms. Each employee, the four, each get $500 in annual uniform allowance. Salt, that is the salt that we budget for every year for winter. Between streets and state highway is where we get all our salt funding. This year will be a good one. Mild winter, when we get a couple mild winters, we're able to conserve some of that, that funds and expend those at a later time when we get a rough winter. The next line item, if you look to the right, we have 45,000 sit there this year. If you look to the right, there was really nothing spent in the last three years. It's because the street levy paid solely for all roadwork repair. Well, because the gas tax only goes into these two funds, we are currently looking to put 45,000 out of this fund, add it to the street levy to increase that estimate for road repairs that I can do this year in 2020. And then we have fuel, 5,000, repair and maintenance supplies, small tools. Capital outlay this year would, would be your wood chipper, street painting, equipment, snow plow and start looking to get our bucket truck replaced. That thing has been a dandy for us, but it is starting to get really aged. And the capital outlay is now down to 39,000 for that.
Let me ask you to chime in here real quick.
Absolutely.
We are proposing taking the wood chipper out of parks, so that means I can take out of that too and put it off to 2021?
Yes, now that you brought that up, yeah, because that's a shared, that's a shared piece of equipment. So yes, I apologize for missing that earlier.
No, I missed it too, but thank you.
And then the backhoe was paid off in 2019. That is why you will not see anything there, as in you did previous years, and then your miscellaneous. So your construction expenses for that fund are 374, 374,350, which will leave us in, on an estimated, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm taking off that 30.
Oh, you're gonna take it off now?
Yeah, just so they have a number.
If you flip to the next page.
356,850. 356,850. Okay, let me write that down. So that would be your total street construction.
And what did we take off?
The wood chipper, since we're holding off a year for the parks, it was a dual purchase.
Say it one more time.
The wood chipper.
No, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, 356,000, 850.
Thank you.
Is council okay with the amendments to the CIP? Because we're gonna have to follow that up with legislation. So I'd rather know now if you guys will have any issues with it, rather than by bringing the legislation to you, then we have issues with it. Does anyone have any, any concern by putting that wood chipper off until 2021?
That would be.
Will, will the one we've got hold till 21?
We baby it, so we try. But there, there are times we, when we know we get into the heavy work, we go rent one.
Okay, that's my next suggestion.
And the worst case scenario is it breaks down. We can always reopen it back up to put it back in.
If needed.
If we need to. I just don't wanna go through all the amendments and then have it, have to do it again because it's not right.
And we did not, did we move the beet juice situation over to 21?
I don't think, I don't think that's even in there at all.
We took it out of.
We took it out, but I don't think I'm gonna put it back in. So if that's something you guys wanna do, we'll have to allocate that for 2021.
We were right around, what, I think 31,000 to outfit trucks.
I think 31 to 35 was about where we talked about.
But I know we took it out a year, a year ago, but no one brought it back up in the CIPs we just had, right? So if that's something we wanna talk about, we can do it, but it's not gonna be until next year winter anyway. So see what I'm saying? Because we're about done with this year. And there's just an article, I actually thought of you, there's an article.
Well, there's an article and there's, there's quite a bit of controversy about how much can be saved. But you've got Green County, I think that is the article that we were talking about, has been using that for quite a while and there is a substantial savings. Again, with the light winter we had, we're saving quite a bit on the salt, but who knows what next year's gonna bring?
I can give you a little bit update. I have spoke with Clark County who uses a little bit, they call it beet heat, so it's not the beet juice. They do about 10, 10 to 15% addition, but their road miles are great. So that increases their savings for all the county roads that they do. We salt mainly on the beginning intersections and main drags. We let the traffic track that stuff through where we used to lay that salt down non-stop. Does it make us have blacktop at the surface, it, right after the snowfall? No, it doesn't, but it makes our intersections and main drags, main thoroughfares all clean, except for some of those straight stretches. So I asked him about how much we could use and I met with the guy with the beet heat addition and he goes, you know, you can add it in, but you need a separate barn for it. Because you, you tumble it and then it sits by itself and you utilize it when your temperatures obviously are below 20 or below teens. You don't use it whenever you're in that 20 to, up to 32 degrees. So how often would we use it? It's that, for us, it could potentially sit there for a while. And the problem we have with salt is it does get clumpy with us. Even when it's undercover, it gets clumpy due to the humidity. We don't get a good rotation on this winter where we don't use much. That salt was sitting in that barn for over two years. So that's what we dread. Then we have to go in there and bust this stuff up with a backhoe and then we have busted an auger before in a salt spreader with this. So, but it's definitely something we've been looking at, but we definitely would have to do that, the application and then another probably small structure to house it or tarp it.
But as council wants, how would council like us to do that?
Well, I think this is a situation that somewhere along the line, yes, it should be put back in. Now whether we do it 21 or whatever, but I think sooner or later, we're gonna go to it.
I think so too. And I think now I'm thinking about this, I know we took it out and I think we had said, hey, the gas tax is coming in. Let's see all that receipts for a year. And I thought we had planned on bringing it back and looking at it again in 2021.
Excuse me, but I'd like to look at beet heat first before we do beet juice, because beet juice is all the extra equipment. If we do beet heat, it's additive to salt and in the barn. It's granular.
And, and again, that's, you know, your situation because that, to me. And again, that's, you know, your situation, because that, to me, isn't operational.
So that may not take capital, may just be bumping the line item of salt to compensate for that, maybe that extra thousand dollars worth of additive to that. And I'll double check that.
So are we putting any money aside for it in 2020?
I don't think we need to. I don't think we need to.
Do you want to add a thousand too? Because we weren't, we're probably not going to use much of this. We're not going to use any of this in this winter. So it's all going to be going for next December only? I think we'll be good. No, it wouldn't be capital. Just adding to the salt line item.
Oh, just another thousand dollars for salt?
Yeah. There's no special equipment.
So how does that work? I'm sorry, I was looking at whole numbers, but. So that's just get sprayed into our existing salt bin?
It comes in granular, like they may bring one dump truck of granular stuff. We mix it and we have to store it separate from our other salt.
So it's a dry product?
It's a dry product. Yeah, unlike what they were requesting with beet juice, which is the liquid additive sprayed onto the salt at discharge.
Do you think it'd be over the course of the year, over twenty-one hundred dollars by any unforeseen anything? Because if it is, then we can, I'll have to put it into the capital, which is fine. It's there. It's in the capital. It's already accounted for.
We could just do it with the salt, because the salt we spend over ten thousand a year and, ah, sorry, in salt. So we would just, the vendor, before they deliver the salt, just have them bring the extra granular with it.
Where are you storing the granular at?
It's in the salt barn. The salt that we get now, we would just be having them send over a couple bags of or a truckload of that stuff. I don't know if it's specific, but it would be just be like getting a delivery of salt, I believe, is an additive, not like a capital expense. It's a disposable item.
Right, but our capital asset plan is more than just that. So I'll look at it, see where it needs to go, and then we'll get with everyone. So it either could just go like a line item, he says, or worst case scenario, we amend the CIP, which I got to do and we can put it in there as well. So we'll figure that out.
Give me just a second. Ladies, just so you know, I don't know if you know, we're going to go till six. We'll probably take a break at four. But if you need to leave anytime before, just raise your hand, sign your card, so you guys can go.
Mr. Kiko, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
And the building down there behind the waterworks or behind the old doctor's office?
Yes.
Has anybody looked at that roof that's leaking, that amollishing part of that building?
When you guys get to lands and buildings, Mr. Bridge will have that, and it is in the approved capital improvement plan that you guys approved.
I'm good, sorry.
That's okay. Any more questions on street construction? The goal, before I leave that, is because we, I think we'll be able to carry ending fund balances, we'll probably start putting money back for new equipment to replace some of the older, older stuff that's coming in there.
Like what kind of equipment?
Oh, like our other trucks, like mainline plow stuff that, yeah. Next page is state highway. Oh, I'm sorry, we were already on that same page, so. If everybody's at state highway, that is where we receive the other portion of our motor vehicle license and state gasoline tax. So a portion goes to the street construction, a portion goes to state highway. This is a very small portion, and this is to maintain our state highways. We have two, two thirty-five, excuse me, and five seventy-one. And so basically, the only expenses we do here is salt, because we salt the roads. And then we put a little bit in maintenance of infrastructure, maintenance of equipment. If we got to go in durapatch, we may take a little bit out of state highway to cover those costs, because it is state highway stuff. We don't really spend a whole lot out of it that we really, that needs to be done. However, in 2023, 2024, we will be paying twenty percent of the two thirty-five resurfacing project that will be coming in. And the last time it was done is when the Heritage of Flight Festival first came back out to Main Street. So what year was that?
Oh, five.
So oh, five, it'll be 2023 when we get that same resurfaced.
That's when we're going to do that. Just on that, I don't want to hold you up. Is the street lighting on Main Street, like the decorative lights, is that part of this fund? Or is that the lights itself is a different fund?
That's under the streetlight assessment.
Okay.
Are you talking just the ones that are already up?
Right.
That's street lighting assessment.
Okay.
Any questions with the state highway? We're estimating about one twenty-two to be left over, but again, I have to keep that up there because I will probably be using ninety percent of that for our twenty percent share of that project coming up.
How are you on that catch basin repair? Is that going to become, coming due this year for those catch basins that you have marked on Main Street?
A couple are being done with the traffic signal project, and then a couple are in there, yeah, for this year. Those will be levy, because it's storm. Yeah, they're accounted for. We good with that? State permissive tax, which is the next page at the top, that is your fund two oh three. We receive vehicle permissive tax of an estimated sixty-two thousand. Basically, this pays currently either a portion or a majority of a portion of Ron Wright's wages and his benefits. And we kind of take that down to where we utilize that as much as possible for labor.
You said the catch basin were in the street levy?
Yeah, under asphalt aggregate.
Okay, that needs to go into, are they over twenty-one hundred dollars to fix?
Various materials.
Project itself, for each one, is it over twenty-one hundred?
I can't remember what you said it was.
I think one was like eighteen, one was twenty-three.
That has to be moved to capital, but it's fine. Our capital is not, anytime you repair something, it still can go for a capital.
Yeah, I'll get with you after that.
I just want to make sure we have it right.
So is anybody have any question with permissive? We kind of keep a low balance there. We kind of just try to utilize it up, like I said, of all the labor. And then moving on, we have street levy. This is the estimated revenues of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, and this is real estate taxes and homestead rollback, and this is based on the citizens who passed the street levy for the city of New Coral.
So that's what you're projecting this year for the street levy to bring in, one thirty-three?
Yeah, we're projecting one, yeah, one hundred and thirty-three thousand. And we have some revenue that, or carryover from this last year. Oh, there it is. There it is. We brought some money forward of seventy-one thousand. So basically, it is a, in our expenditures, what we're really going to put towards road resurfacing project is a hundred and sixty thousand. It's going to leave our ending fund balance at about twenty. I don't like to take that down near zero. Only the fact is, you know, you never know when something's going to pop up on a street and we need to do a major repair with that. So that will be the one sixty plus the forty-five will be what we take out to go get the road estimates and combine those to do like we've been doing the last couple of years. And then the twenty thousand under asphalt, concrete, and aggregate, that's just our in-house work that we do. Or if we need to get a contractor to do some work that we can't perform.
Oh, let me ask you, Mr. Kiko, I'm sorry, is this, any of this going to cover any curb work up on Main?
All the curb that is bad up on Main is under the property owner's responsibility to do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
On that Main Street improvement, are we going to go back down around Water Dog and redo that section down there that was just recently done?
Yeah, it's funny that that lasted fifteen years the first time, and then this time, we do have a major, what they call pumping issue up underneath. We got water pushing real bad now. That will be redone in 2023, but we are thinking about doing some concrete work down there this year and digging it out and just fixing a couple of those pothole areas with concrete.
Would it not be, and make more logical sense to go down there and on the western edge of that concrete, dig down and rebuild concrete up like a concrete wall, so when that water hits, it's diverted rather than going under that pavement?
You talking about water that runs off of Water Dog?
Yeah.
It just runs over and then runs across the road. Nothing really gets under there. It's, everything's coming up from underneath. Because we have slotted drains on Hillcrest and Tal Shroyer, so those roads do not enter.
But you're thinking that the water is not getting underneath that pavement that's causing our problem?
It's down underneath the concrete.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
So like, maybe when the creek rises?
No.
No, it's regular groundwater. There's some storm. I mean, there'll be a little bit, but there's all hill right there. And honestly, the concrete is bad. That whole area needs ripped out.
Yeah.
I guess my concern is, number one, if we don't go in there and do it right, we're going to be repairing that every so often.
We're going underneath the asphalt this time and redoing the concrete base. We'd like to get rid of it, honestly, get rid of that concrete base, because it does not drain water. Three oh fours drain water. And that's our problem. I would love to redo all of two thirty-five and get that base out, but that is so expensive, the city. We don't just pay twenty percent of that. We pay twenty percent of a resurface, but if we need anything underneath that rebuilt or anything like that, that's all, comes on the city for full cost.
But 2023 is for the resurface of.
For just the resurface.
Now, I'm assuming when that day comes, there'll probably be some spot work that they're going to have done, right?
Yes.
Have you done any test borings down there to see what you got, base wise?
We've had it dug up. It's twelve inches thick of just rotted concrete. We don't need to go below.
What's below the concrete?
Below the concrete, pit run.
Pit run? About the only way you're going to get rid of that on the hillside, you're going to have to build a barrier on the east side of the road, run drainage tile through there. You've got pit run underneath that concrete. You're still going to have the problem of water coming off the hillside.
Yeah, it runs it right across Water Dog's parking lot and then runs through, because they'll always have approaches. So if we decide to try and put slotted drains, we could try that approach. But you can't put a wall, because they have almost, it's almost wide open for their ingress egress points for Water Dog. Is that where you're talking about putting a wall up?
Well, through that area between the river or the creek, whatever you want to call it, up to the first house there. And that's where the biggest part of the problem is, correct?
Well, yeah, but I think, I think the wall needs to be on the west side of the road between Water Dog and the road in order to divert that water.
Well, if you put a drain tile there, several sections of it, put your wall on the east side and bring the drain tile out, that'll take the water out.
I could look and talk with the owners of Water Dog and see how much right-of-way clearance we have, because anything we do has to stay inside the right-of-way. And if we've got enough room, we might be able to put a slotted drain. There's just not enough room for a wall, because I think only right in that part where their building is, is raised curb, everything is ingress and egress points. So we can't block their approaches. So we might be able to do slotted drains that's like at the foot of Tal Shroyer and Hillcrest. And that way, it'll run from the parking lot and hopefully catch that slotted drain.
I cannot offer a value to.
Me either.
It's like you lost me a pit run, so have fun with that.
I had a Lego.
How many knows what I'm talking about?
I know. That's why you guys are doing your lingo together.
But what I'm saying is, if we put the, you can classify for a water problem intimate domain, where you can't put a wall on the outside. You'd have to go through.
Are you talking about the bridge side or in front? Because our water.
Okay, you got Water Dog right here, two thirty-five here. If you come on the other side of two thirty-five there, on the east side, put your retaining wall.
Oh, yeah, we don't have a problem with water coming that direction. We have water coming from the west.
That's what I say, that's where you put your drain tile underneath there, run from west to east, back out towards creek.
Yeah, we already have storm under there. We have storm that runs underneath there already.
That's something that's not working though.
It's, there's water pumping outside of the storm too.
You're going to find out, once you take concrete out, you've got more problems.
Yeah, we've been under there. We've seen it already.
Alrighty. Moving on.
Any other questions with levy? All right.
I had a Lego set when I was a kid.
I will count pages here to get you guys the next one, so.
Kind of Lego set as a kid.
On break, when we take a little break, let's go through and everyone number their package, because.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Just, so.
It's hard to get Excel.
Oh, yeah, no.
And I was planning on trying to get it all on one page.
After the one we were on?
Yep, seven pages. You'll see at the bottom be water operating.
Are you counting the page we were on as one?
Yes.
Let's keep on going until you see Twin Creeks infrastructure bond twice, and then underneath you see water operating.
Water operating, yep, I see it.
All right, this is our water department. And we are carrying forward from 2019, a beginning fund balance of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. And we are estimating nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in water consumer charges. That is what everyone is billed for on their, on their usage at their residence or commercial business. Water miscellaneous receipts, that's just, it's a catch-all for anything. It could be late fees, it could be any number of those. So our total operating revenue for the year will be one million. No, I'm sorry. One million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine. So out of that, what we're looking to spend is there's wages and fringe benefits. It is a three-person department. Currently, it is Bob Hope, our water superintendent, Ryan Williams, our operator. And soon to be, don't really want it to happen, but it's happening, Derek Hutchinson, which he will be replaced by another individual. So their wages are at two hundred and fifteen thousand with overtime. We average about seven. And their overtime consists of, they're required to do weekend duties on Saturday and Sunday and any kind of water main breaks. So this department will see a higher than normal compared to other departments on overtime wages. I'm sorry.
He's talking to himself.
The other one that kind of stands out is your medical insurance. Again, for three people, we put eighty thousand in. We only spent thirty-six the last year. We currently have, you know, some that do not take our insurance and then, you know, a couple singles, so it really keeps it low, but we have to be ready for full-time with full insurance needs. So that takes our total personal services to three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred. Training, travel, and transportation, water department personnel are required to have training. They're required to have a operator's, Ohio EPA certified operator's license. And again, they are also CDL tested, so if they need to get any endorsements, renewals, that covers that. Gas electric service, this is basically the water treatment facility. We average forty-five thousand for gas and electric service. So when you look at that, it's high, but it does run a lot of pumps. And the pumps don't run twenty-four seven, but the plant does, so those kick on and off. Where we do put a lot of money is in a couple line items below of maintenance of facilities, maintenance of infrastructure, and maintenance of equipment. So this year, just in those three line items, we are looking to put in eighty thousand dollars in maintenance. And that could be anything to, you know, grease, lube, small motors, pumps, you know, name it. Try to keep things up to par and get their life expectancy out past where they're supposed to be, or where we'd like to save some money down the road. Membership dues and publications. In this one, it is typically larger, because our annual water license to operate is over four thousand dollars. That's what the EPA charges, charges us to operate. We also have just joined a couple organizations such as Ohio Roll Water, and those companies help us come in, give us some on-the-job training with things that we typically don't deal with. There is a gentleman, just works with him, he's been around for forty-some years. And if we have a kind of a hiccup, he comes in and helps us out. That's what those benefits. And if we have a kind of a hiccup, he comes in and helps us out. That's what those benefits are from some of those dues that we pay. Moving on down to the next section, your office supplies, operational supplies, uniforms with three people. That would be 1,500, but since we are changing out personnel, we're going to be hiring a new person, so we're going to have an additional 500. So that's why we budgeted 2,000. Salt, this is a big one. This is what we use to soften your water. We did bump it up because with the 2020, the new per ton salt rate is 130.41. It, we budgeted enough because if we do get into some main breaks that we can't, not that we can't get to, can't find, or usage goes up, we have to account for that treatment. Well, as you can see, we really tried it like last year, 45,000. We are very adamant at getting a leak detection company to come in along with the crews and listen to hydrants on a regular basis, so we're not wasting water. Asphalt, concrete, and aggregate, these are basically after we have a main break, somebody's got to pay for to put the asphalt back in. So the water department, if their cause of the asphalt work is the water main break, they fix that. Fuel, repair and maintenance supplies, small tools, those go into basically doing our everyday jobs. Equipment for water, it usually is not cheap. Capital outlay. We are going to be making, Mr. Bridge is going to be requesting with council an adjustment of a CIP. And capital outlay, we have. Apologize. 2019 started with the rehab of our high-service pump building. We finished it out and got the rest of our materials. This year, to finish that out, they will be starting out here within the next week or two. That will bring that old 50-some building, as I spoke at council the night, back up. Hydraulic study, tower controls for SCAR, and start putting money away for valve replacement, water main replacement. We may not specifically spend 10,000 on water line replacement, but we need to keep accounting for that. So when we got to do a water line replacement, it's 500,000, you know, we'll be saving up some money to be able to go after OPWC funds to help, you know, hopefully pay for 50% of our costs with some grant funds. And then we still will pay the contractor who did our tower painting, the 115,288 dollar payment. In the CIP also has a 28,875 repayment to the general fund. As you remember, the general fund had paid the first year's payment for that tower program. Because the water department did pretty well this last year, and we still have a rate increase that just went into effect, and we have another one going in, and these last two are smaller. We are requesting that we go ahead and take our capital up to 310,000 from the 223 to repay the general fund, that full balance of that repayment. So we'll we'll get it back. Yeah, he's all super happy. 2022 was supposed to be the last year for repayment, but we feel it is good for us to do this, get it back into the general fund. As one, it does help the general fund. It can be used for anything. But if something else comes down the pipe, as in this case, I can approach Mr. Bridge and say, hey, you know, I got some ideas. I might want to do another loan. I might want to change some things up and be our own self-sufficient entity. So that is the one big positive we have with that. And with our debt service, our water meter payment is 15,501 per year. The Tecumseh YMCA extension that went in in 2004, that will be done in 2024. That is 7200 a year. And then the OWDA loan for the new water plant, that is 217,250 per year. That will also be paid off in 2026. So with those all being added up, our total operating revenue would be 1,167. Our expenditures, I'm sorry, our revenues. I am. Anyway, our ending fund balance will be about 162,000 after repayment, after fixing, refurbishing this high-service pump, and the dreaded Adams Tower discussion stuff. So we are, we are sitting now with a reserve fund. It's not, we need an annual amount of reserve. So our budget averages 800,000 to 900,000. I want to see that reserve get to 800,000, 900,000 for when things start to break down.
It's come up, it's come up though.
So I'll, yeah, I'll entertain any questions. It's a very complex enterprise fund. It's supposed to be sole source with its own income and its own expenditures without help. But, you know, as you can see, we've gotten help in the past. So any questions with anything in the water department?
Do we have a ballpark idea of what it will take to take the Adams Tower down if we decide?
Yes, the companies that we, and it's been a couple of years, they're rated around 30,000 to take it down because they go scrap. They get the scrap money off of it. Exactly, yeah.
When the HGTV thing, they're going to fix the water tower for us?
Oh, really? That's when?
Yeah.
Should be this summer.
It's a win positive.
It's a win.
I'm the king of thinking positive. Yeah, right here in this guy.
Whatever.
How we know in full well how old the city is, what is our plans down the road for some of the water main replacement?
Right now, we don't have any immediate concerns. However, we, as you can see, we're putting money back for that time when it does come for that. When you get a main break or five main breaks within a one-block section, within a really short amount of time, that's when you'll replace that section. But nothing is on our radar currently, immediately, that we need to go dig up this summer and replace like all the church street water main.
Knowing full well the age of some of the mains in the older section of town, I would assume it's probably going to be sooner than later. Then we're probably going to have to be replacing some of those.
We are into more valve replacement is more of our concern. We are fortunate that we sit in pit run. It does, it shifts, but without that clay packing on there, you get a lot more deterioration. And we have a lot of ductile iron in our system, which is the new age. It does last much longer. And the cast iron that we do have in our system is in, is in pretty good shape for being from the 50s. We don't have what I would consider the old section of town, which is some of the old mains from the 30s. We've been pretty fortunate with it, but we know sometime, you know, it could, it could start. But our ground has been pretty stable. There's not a lot of electrolysis, and for that, that is just a lot of current that flows through that corrodes copper and corrodes steel underground.
Well, that one section on Zimmerman, what have we had, three main breaks in that one block area? Just up from my place.
Yeah, just, yeah, a little over, yeah, it's like a block and a half.
And I would have thought that that area would have been fairly stable.
Yeah, what the problem with that one is, is that one was installed in an angle due to the hill on, the way that grades up on Edgebrook, because where we did the one by shoot, by that manhole, was almost eight and a half foot deep. And our typical water main is not that deep. And you go up only half a block and you're at three foot, three and a half feet. So.
Back to you, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to wastewater. This is the, this is our elephant that I'm currently working on that's in the room. Revenues came in lower than expected last year. And we feel that a lot of conservation has taken place. And we think that's one of the contributing factors.
You're meaning HE washer dryers?
Yes.
Toilets?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of that stuff. Water's not seeing it because we had to increase rates to compensate for that.
Right.
Where sewer, the rate increase ended in 2017, and now we're really seeing a hit again. So with those revenues and where you see water miscellaneous receipts of 163,500 below there, that is the loan proceeds for the primary clarifier that has to be reseeded. Later on, we'll get to where that will be expended. So our total revenues for the year are estimated to be 959,500. If you turn the pages to expenses, this is a fork, there's four member crew with a superintendent and three operators. And their wages are at 270, 270,000 with overtime wages at 10. With their fringe benefits, obviously with four, four personnel and possibly four families, that's 130,000, you know, in medical benefits. So their wages and benefits are at 474,000 estimated for the year. Same thing, train, training, travel, transportation. They are certified operators through Ohio EPA and are required to maintain those with CEUs. CDL testing, same thing, they're required to have CDLs. Under contractual, gas and electric, it's 115,000. They do have a lot of pumps, motors, and things that run. We have a blower that feeds air to numerous pieces of equipment. So that's our big expense there. Maintenance facilities and sludge hauling, maintenance of infrastructure, maintenance of equipment. This is 109,000, and we've been doing this for the last five years that we have put into that wastewater plant, not counting the projects. So we put a lot of money into maintenance to keep, to keep extending the life expectancy of the current equipment. But we do know, as we are starting to see now, that we're going to have to start being, not just maintenance is going to keep us going, it's almost going to be time to replace. So our contractual is at 258,250. And then we get down to materials and supplies. Biggest one is chemicals. Lots of chemicals. We got chlorine. We do, there's just, there's, I don't know of all the chemicals that are involved in treatment of wastewater, but there's a lot. Fuel, repair and maintenance supplies, you know, with those, those are just things that they utilize on a daily basis that keeps that operation going. Capital outlay. And the capital outlay is 160,000 for the primary clarifier. The current, the current construction cost is 149. If that goes down to 149, obviously our revenues will go down to 149 with that. There is in the capital currently a van utility crane truck of 40,000, which would put the total combined capital at 200,000. In your capital outlay packet, you'll notice it says 362. Because a project is carrying over from 2019, this is also the expense account for that influent building upgrade project and the primary clarifier. So we have to take into account what we're paying for, for the finish of that influent project and what the clarifier project will be spent on there also. And then our debt service, OWDA meter project, this is the other 50% for the water meters, and the software was 15,501. And on the next page, the Tecumseh YMCA, there was also sewer extended.
Hey, Howie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to ask you something real quick. I know it technically doesn't have. Can those new meters that we, well, not new, but the ones that were put in a few years ago, can those things be cheated?
I don't think there's a possibility because we get alerts of that.
Okay.
So say if someone takes one out and puts it backwards, we get an immediate notification of reverse flow.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just curious.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep, and they're all solid state. So the old days of being able to drill a hole in.
I've always heard like putting magnets on them or something.
That's a thing of the past, but yes, that was a possibility.
Okay.
Turn yours back around.
Yeah. No, I just, and I was wondering, I mean, if that was a possibility of losing money that way, you know, revenue from water. So.
Repairing of leaks is a revenue loss too. So what we do for that is a revenue loss.
Okay.
OPWC loan for the Tecumseh YMCA, again, that was sewer extended, that will be paid off in 2024. That's 6,879. The OPWC loan, wastewater treatment plan improvement, that was the OPWC zero interest loan for the added filters that we did in 2012, the sludge press, and a few of those items that were put in during that project. And then the sewer jet, 23,300. This is the last year that will be paid off at the, that will be paid off this year. So our current debt service is 78,324. With our total wastewater operating expenses tallying 1,211,824. Well, with our, bringing the money we brought forward from last year, because we had some loan proceeds that came in at the end of the year, was 261,309. We add the other water, wastewater operating revenues, and you take out the expenses. We are projected to end this year at 8,984 and 75 cents. I am not comfortable with that at all. I, and as I spoke with council during CIP and a couple of work sessions here, we had discussed rates. I will be proposing a rate increase that I just, it'll be required. I really hope that when we get to this, that we'll see what I come up with. Because these loans that will, that are, we're utilizing right now will be repayable. Their first payments are 2021. So this gives me approximately 10 months, or not 10 months, eight to nine months to get rates going and start getting ready for loan repayment and start getting this fund up. There was a last rate done and rate, rate increase in 15, 16, and 17. We skipped 18, 19, and then, so we're going to have to look at 20 to do what we need to do for loan repayment and the future of this wastewater department. The other side to that too is I do want to, I want to apply for some OPWC funds. It will take matching funds. Those you, you ask for a year out or more or project out. And if I don't have funds projected, I can't apply for OPWC without knowing I'm going to be able to get those funds. So this is the, the one fund, kind of like where water was, and you see where water came along with those, with those rates. In my previous years, I have tried to do perpetual rate increases. Now, I don't mean perpetual 10, perpetual 15%, but there could be a couple significant years, and then you drop it to like that one, one and a half, 2% where you might be just under inflation or maybe just over inflation to take up the cost of any inflation on costs that we currently operate with. So I definitely would entertain any questions. This is the, the one that I have the extreme concern with.
One of the things we had talked about earlier this morning is possibly seeing if the van utility crane truck could be put off for a year. Part of the CIP for wastewater is 40,000 for a van utility crane truck. If we were to put that off until 2021, 2022, that would give a little bit more cushion for this year. We'll just take that 40,000 out of the capital and you can just that may be about 49,000 with the projected income balance. You can keep it in there. We can wait towards like the end of the year to get it to see how it comes in, but at some point in time, the, the rate increase is going to have to be presented.
What truck, what vehicles that particularly?
Go ahead, Howie, sorry.
There's one, remember the Jeep was wrecked, and so this would technically be its replacement.
Oh, the one that was stolen?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, one was stolen.
Okay.
Yeah, we had done some minor repairs as we had talked about too, the one on the floorboard for just getting by. We have a good truck down there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have a nice truck. We have the Chevy there for that backup, used around in town for just checking manholes to just help out to get us by.
I thought you said something about a crane. Or did I just mishear you?
No, in the CIP, it's van utility crane truck.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
It's a, it would be a much bigger person.
I just misunderstood what he said. Gotcha. Well, I mean, I would have him make that call, I mean, as far as.
Well, we'll have them in the CIP, so it'd be part of it.
You mean if you want to take it out?
Yeah, we'd take it out because you guys pass it as being, yeah.
Right. I would ask his opinion on that.
No, we, we discussed it. He is. No, we, we discussed it, he, he is, he is, we discussed this this morning, so.
So you guys are, okay.
Yeah, we're okay with it, just to help cushion that bottom line, but again, we need.
I mean, if, he says, in my opinion, if he doesn't, if he says his departments can get by without it for another year, then, and they're safe and everything's, yeah, as far as I, my opinion is.
What do you think, sir? How do you know? Mr. Cobb, Mr. Cook?
Well.
I know, I was just going to wait for you to shoot that. You want us to keep it, don't you?
Yeah.
We've got it in, we've got it in the CIP, so if we don't spend it.
Are you okay with that being that close?
Why do we need to adjust the CIP?
Because it's already been passed.
I understand that, but if we don't spend it.
It's, yeah.
I mean, it's still there, but then it also, well, it looks like we didn't execute the order from council because we love the CIP purpose hanging out there, so I'm not trying to, two years down the road, be accused of not fulfilling council's orders because.
Well, but if, if council understands, that's my concern, and council basically is sitting here and we're talking about this, so my feeling is, you got it in there, we didn't spend it, it's just like the money for the parking lot out there.
Right, but another thing with that too is, is if we don't amend the CIP and we need it for other purposes, then we have to go back and amend the CIP.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'd rather amend the CIP if we need it, rather than go back and do two.
I have to amend the CIP anyway for other things, so I would just knock it out one shot, because like right now, say if we leave that one out and it's getting close to the year and we need to pull $5,000 out of that line, now, now we have to go back and redo the CIP at that one time. Does that make sense?
What do you think, Ms. Peggy Agelson?
Does that make sense?
I agree with Randy. I mean, he's already going to be making changes, so may as well go ahead and change that and probably zoom that.
Ms. Hopkins?
Either way.
Mr. Grimm?
Yeah. Go ahead and do it.
Do it.
Take it out.
There's your answer.
So if we were to, so yeah, to clear, to amend the CIP, to remove it, can we appropriate it, not to specifically spend, but let's say we get to the end of the clarifier project and the ending fund balance right near the end of the year is going to be, is it going to be positive, let's say 10,000? I could potentially use that 40,000 to pay more on to that clarifier, take out less loan.
Are you suggesting we put that 40,000 into the miscellaneous line item, or do you want to put its?
Yeah, miscellaneous could be a very good.
Lower our.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Well, where are you taking, you're putting the money in.
But it wouldn't be appropriated if we just take it out, since it's got the appropriate somewhere.
It's in there already in the capital, right?
Yeah, but we're taking it out.
And you're taking it out, and now you want to put it somewhere else.
Yeah, whatever you appropriate.
So why wouldn't you just?
Well, the problem is if I appropriate it to the clarifier now, it could only be used for the clarifier, and if I have something go and I need to use 40 for something else.
That's what the question was.
Yes, and not specific too.
Well, we'll be able to see.
I mean, wherever, I mean, wherever, I don't want to put it in there.
Forgot, we're being recorded.
Let me think about this. I'll think about it, we'll get back to you on strategy, because.
Watch yourself.
Can we do like, can we just do like a, a repayment line item for capital?
True.
It, it's going to require internal discussion from us, but we'll figure out the best way to utilize it. I don't want to hold you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do we have any kind of an idea of how much of a rate increase we're talking?
The two first ones I got, the first one I'm looking at is close to 20% for the first year.
How much?
20.
Wow.
Water, waters ended up being 35, I believe, 35, 15, 5, and 5, I think is what theirs I'm still working on numbers now that I have some real fine tune. But yeah, just, just my, my rough is where I'm at, was like a 20, 15, and then, you know, maybe doing a 5, 5.
Well, just like when we did the, the main water tower, I know we're going to have work sessions on this and we can.
It is, and I want to politely remind everyone, when we did this with the water rate increases, it was like a 35, 15, 15, and people just looked at that 35% and we had a packed house.
Yeah.
The moment that Jim Luthley gave the actual dollar amount, your bill would be increased. Everyone's like, what, I've been here for that much? It is not.
You were right, it, when I figured, I should have, I apologize, it, it would average out because an average residential is 4,500 gallons a month, which comes out, it's about $4.
Right, the percentage sounds scary.
My, my bad.
We're going to talk about dollars, not percentages.
I know, I know.
Set it down the wrong path.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, when I, when I approached it this time, I, we did that with the water, it will be in dollars.
Because that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, and once people talked the dollar amount, it was no one.
Everyone was terrified, then they saw the actual dollar amount, it was like, okay, I hope they send me free water.
Yeah. He's got his meter.
I like you guys get free utilities, what are you talking about? I'm kidding, kidding.
But please, I, I am open to tons of discussion with my enterprises. They are your most critical. They require a lot of back and forth, education, instruction, training, to make sure that your two fundamental water and wastewater stay in excellent shape.
Any questions on wastewater? Mr. May, I recommend it's four o'clock, maybe we can take five, 10 minutes.
Take 10?
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
All right, and moving on, swimming pool.
No, yeah, okay.
This is Randy's.
No, it's not.
All right, let's go to revenues.
15,000. You think they're scared.
Let's go ahead and reduce the pool memberships to 15,000. Do I have any other, buddy? Okay.
All right, all serious, the pool's got some, we got to talk about the pool, but Mr. Kiko.
I'll give you the basics of it and we can get into that discussion, so we brought 19,841 forward from 2019, and with pool memberships, daily gate fees, concessions, party rentals, and games, we're estimating to bring in approximately, with a general fund transfer of 20,000, $97,250. So with that 97,250 revenue, we are looking to expend wages of 45,000 and appropriate fringe benefits to equal out about 57,800. Your gas, electric, to heat the pool and run everything else, communication, excuse me, maintenance of facilities, maintenance of equipment, and your, basically everyday operational stuff is around 22,000. And then we get down to some other operational concession stand supplies, your chemicals that it takes to run the pool during the year, your operational supplies, repair and maintenance, small tools, though, that tallies out to 23,250. And in capital outlay, we have set aside in your approved capital outlay of 45,000, which includes pool maintenance of 25, AED defibrillator of 3,000, pump and related equipment, 7,000, security system, 5,000, and entryway floor renovation of 5,000. So at the end, the pool expenses would equal to 149,050. So with your carryforward balance, your revenues and your expenditures, the ending swimming pool balance is estimated to be a negative 31,959. Mr. Bridge?
Oh, thank you for that segue. So when we look at this, last year, the pool did a 40,000 transfer. So when you actually look at that 1,000 ending balance, due solely because of the 40,000 transfer from the general fund. So if that general fund, the transfer did not occur last year, it would be negative 13,000 in the quarter, so it would have been negative 20. So one of the few things we can do is take off the transfer and some of the general fund, so you guys make a splash in the capital. That the pool is considered an enterprise fund, so it should not end in a negative balance, but we've got to have the long, we've got to have a discussion about how it's going to happen.
If the, where's that here?
So first off, April, thank you for coming. The wages, I know we had talked about the wages have to be increased to be competitive with the fitness center, and then given the managers' rate, so do you think that 40, increasing it up to the 45 would be enough? Let's start with that first. Should we go more? Because let's figure out what we need so that we know what the bottom line is, we see what we can clear. Yeah. But we need to be competitive with the fitness center, because I don't want our good guards
For which part? Oh, if.
So we need to be competitive with that. Let's think, is there any other way we can synthesize, synthesize if we don't increase the rate of that, or is some of the outside factors?
The work, I mean, think about it, your outdoors, people, music.
So just based off the difference between what we pay with the minimum wage, which we told you, you said? Eight, seven.
Don't they get a little bit more?
What, what does the pool, what, what do they pay 10? 10? Minus what, what were they? So that's the difference in hours, about how many hours are allocated here. That's a lot.
Do we give any of the lifeguards any benefits as far as maybe free pool pass or anything So that's not a benefit we can give them, they already have.
So me and Debbie did a, did a calculation actually at the same time, not knowing we were doing it, and we came up with the same number.
So how many company lifeguards in that 16-hour period do you have?
There's a large party, at the most, we'll have seven.
We have seven.
Okay.
So we're fucking another.
So on average, we can average that.
Say five, so times that eight, seven, eight, ten, seven, two, six, five.
93, 60.
That's not a 10 gram, that's all.
So that's a 10 gram though increase from prior.
And we almost, and we almost.
I put 7,000, so we need to probably put another 4,000.
Well, I was wondering what we spent last year, this year.
Yeah, that's what we did last year, and then I added the 7,000. So I'd say 7,000 plus the 5,000 would be 12,000, which is a little bit over the 93, 60, you understand? But then we're going to have subsequent, we have to, we're going to treat.
Be more of a negative.
Yeah. Well, it is going to be more than a negative, but we, that's what we need to figure out, what we need to figure out, how we're going to correct it.
That 130,000 is the actual revenue for the pool last year? Correct?
Yes, but remember it had 40,000 transfer in from the general fund.
Oh, right.
So the revenue was more like 90.
But then if you wouldn't have the transfer in, you wouldn't have done all those upgrades.
I was going to say, we had a lot of upgrades.
Well, you can't say that's opposed to the positive balance when, when the.
No, I'm not.
I'm saying, I, I know what you're saying, so when the transfers, then yeah, then some of those upgrades probably wouldn't.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, I'm saying.
But I want to take a look at, I want to take a look at the capital real quick. Go ahead, Mr. Cobb, I'm sorry.
I've got a question, April. Is it not time to maybe increase the non-resident fees to cover some of this cost?
We discussed that before.
I know we talked about it, but.
I mean, I do price increases, there are increases, our flyer is already out, it goes out at the end of each season for the next season, so 2020 prices are already out, we've already sold passes and things such as that. You know, and I do, I have increased the prices of the parties, swim lessons, concession stand prices will go up, you know, I have to raise the bills or compensate for the minimum wage going up.
Okay, let me, let me. Sorry, can I interrupt everyone? I don't want to get off track, but I know we had talked about in the CIP, our administrative meeting this morning, pool maintenance, we have 25,000 in for the CIP, and the description that had in the CIP was repair of unforeseen weather damage, including equipment and other miscellaneous repairs in 2024. That's 25,000. Then on top of that, we have a 7,000 line item for pumping related equipment. So are we able to look at that 25,000 general pool maintenance and look at taking some of that off because we already have the 7,000 put in there?
Yeah, we use, we use some of that small stuff, this is where we get in there and all of a sudden we find a huge crack that surfaced that we didn't anticipate through the winter.
Because we have a 5,000 security system, I would like that to be non-resizable, it's a liability thing. So if we look at taking some off the pool maintenance 25, and then maybe put off the entry floor renovation for a year, what do you guys think?
I was going to ask Mr. Kiko what he thought about, I know you spoke of a couple of options as far as sealing up that deep end. You know the deep end is the trouble area for water leaks.
Yep, I did get.
Do we think we should hold off on that for a year?
You, you, yeah, you're going to have to, I just got the prices about a month ago. You're blanketing the deep end, it's going to be about 60,000 to seal off underneath the deep end.
That, is that the ejection from behind you were talking about?
Yes, yeah, to do the whole deep end, not just cracks. The liner portion, I just spoke with that gentleman again about a month ago, he's going to be here in March to come actually take a physical look at our pool, because I told him, I said, we have a lot of negative pressure. He is right around 80 to 85,000. He said his quote may go up a little bit, it was at 78. We discussed what we are required to do, but I said, you really need to come take a look at ours.
But that's for, that was for the whole pool.
That's for the whole pool liner, and I think he was saying 10-year.
Yeah.
10-year on that liner. And I would like to just address Mr. Cobb's, his thing about non-resident, Mr. Cobb, you had asked about non-resident, we had discussed that, what had happened is the Huber Heights YMCA, Troy, Tip City, and Springfield already take most of those customers, so as soon as we probably adjust their rates, they'll, then they'll definitely go to their water parks and they won't come visit us. That's, that's kind of one of the reasons I think we decided to not have a non-resident, is they have a great option to leave us for some, probably a place closer to them.
Well, if you go to Tip City's pool, non-resident pays $5 more per person. Go to Huber Heights Pool, pay $5 more.
Right, but they have a high residency to already occupy their pool, they don't need non-residents really coming in.
If they got a lot of non-residents coming in.
Sure.
They have a lot of non-residents coming in because they have water slides, because they got brand new pools and they got nice facilities. But we don't have that draw to bring non-residents in.
All I'm saying here, and, and I know what she's up against, but we've got to find some way increasing the revenue so we can support this.
How about a raffle like we did for the Harity Festival? That brings in a lot of money.
Well, I mean, April's done a fine job of the pool, since she took it over, I'm not going to, but we got to find some way to start covering this cost for the pool.
I think a lot of it comes down to the capital projects we're putting in, and it's a double edged sword.
Yep.
I mean, it is, we have to improve, but we also have to be able to afford that, and I know last year we did a lot of past due capital improvements of that pool, that was a lot. You know, so council has the opportunity here to adjust the capital for this year just a little bit, but at the end of the day, unless there's no revenue stream being generated or increase whether through gate fees or concession fees, the end result is the general fund transfer is going to have to be more than what it is. I don't know what other way we can get it to be a positive fund dollars without the general fund stepping in. Council's okay with that, that's great, you guys can discuss that amongst yourselves. You guys can discuss that amongst yourselves, but there's really only so many things we can do with this particular fund to get it even or slightly better.
Does an enterprise fund require, is it required self-supporting?
It is, it is highly recommended that the fund is able to supplement.
Part of our job is to provide the services to the community. There are already enough people complaining that there's nothing to do with this town. At least three months out of the year, we can do this.
Are you okay with?
I am okay with, okay, it's a shortfall of thirty thousand plus twenty thousand from the general fund that makes a shortfall of fifty thousand.
You're gonna need probably a total transfer of sixty thousand dollars from the general fund.
Yeah, just, thank you. Thank you very much.
Is it worth sixty thousand to provide something for the kids in the community? I think it is.
It is to me.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the six?
That amounts to about ten dollars a person in the community population.
If you want my honest opinion, and I'm not trying to rain on the parade, I think it's a high transfer for the general fund to do. That is just my opinion.
Why was it sixty though? Yeah, why is it sixty?
Well, because it's gonna have to be sixty. If you look at your current balance of negative thirty-one thousand dollars here, you, that's accounting for a twenty thousand dollar already.
Yeah, so that.
So maybe, yeah.
Fifty-one thousand.
But if you wanted to have some cushion, you would need to put a little bit more in the fifty thousand.
Yep.
You'd have to go fifty-five or sixty.
I have a suggestion. How about, and I don't know if it's ever done anything like this before in the city, but how about donation letters sent out to all the business and, and explain what we're, what you just said, that this is a service that we'd like to continue, you know, would, would anybody like to donate to the pool so we could maintain it and keep it running, you know, and, and have these programs for the swim club and things like that? See if you would generate any money to help fund the pool. You're allowed, I mean, that, you're allowed to do that. I just wondered if we could.
Well, the thing is, businesses are already hampered.
They do. Unless you hit some of the big corporate ones.
And, and we're not, we're not, I mean, we're not telling them they have to, it's just a.
We don't want to detract from the festival.
And we don't want fireworks and stuff like.
The fireworks, the farmer's market, all the other things that they, that we rely on businesses for.
And a lot of businesses too just step up and give money without even asking. And here's, here's, here's what I recommend, because I think usually when we've done the transfers, we've always waited towards the end of the year to see if, how much the pool would need. Last year it was just done automatically. I say that we go ahead and earmark the sixty thousand dollars into it. We don't do it right away. We can see how the funds come in throughout the summer, and then we know we have a sixty thousand dollar blanket there if we need to transfer it in. The pool at the end of the year may only need forty of it. They may only need, enough for that pool to break even would be, would be fine. We just can't have it end in a negative balance for the year.
And besides.
So we can earmark that sixty, doesn't mean it's gonna use it, but if it needs it, it's there.
April's only been running it for what, two years?
Uh, this is like.
Four.
This is what we might hear. The way I look at it is.
It's still growing.
Has gone however many years without any updates. No upgrades, nothing, nothing going into it. I mean, it looks the same way, same paint. So yeah, we're spending more money, but we're maintaining it and we're giving it a better appeal for people. You know, the swim team is looking better, the bathrooms, people wanna come now because the bathrooms are nicer. So the more we go into it, the more people it's going to attract, and they're gonna want to come back or have a party at the pool or whatever. We will do this, but you know, on the paper it's the thirty-one thousand, and like, like you said, we may or we may not need it. But if you stop and you think, like you said, it's a service, and if you're gonna take ten thousand dollars and blow it up in fireworks and then give parks and wreck another twenty thousand for Easter weekend, I mean, this is, those two events in a whole summer.
Well, I.
In the short amount of time, you're providing a whole summer of entertainment for kids and you're also giving, you know, all the high school kids their first employment opportunity, giving their feet wet and working.
No one's, no one's denying that I agree with you, but the difference is, what I'd like to, what I'd like to point out is what you said about those events. Those events are housing the general fund. This is a supposedly self-sustaining enterprise fund. You know, so they're too completely, I see what you're saying, but yeah. But at the same time too, the other debit of this is sixty thousand dollars to supplement for the pool out of the general fund. My opinion of it is it's too high. That's just my opinion to you guys.
But if you took out all that capital outlay that we put in last year and this year and the year before, then we would just be breaking.
Well, that's my, like my segue, I guess.
We're not getting any more appeal, we're not bringing any more people.
I understand that. But what I was also gonna say too is it's very similar to our general fund this year. You know, I agree with putting money into that pool because if we were stagnant with it, no one would come. I'm always gonna sit there and say, yeah, from a city manager standpoint, supplementing the pool with sixty thousand dollar general fund money is high. That is my opinion, I will stick with it. I'm not saying I don't agree with you guys doing it. Now, when you look at our general fund, we ended with one point, one point one million this year. We are making investments. We're in the city building, so we don't have the pay written. We are investing in a planning department so he can have some revenue. So it's a cash flow. When you look at our general fund, we took a hit this year. Our ending balance is one point one, now it's projected to be about five hundred thousand next year because we're making investments. The same thing as the pool, we're making investments in the pool. It's just a general fund this has to suffer. I'm down with putting sixty thousand in and seeing at the end of the year how much it's going to need.
What's the reason for putting so much in?
Right now it's at negative thirty-one.
Uh-huh.
Yep, so if we do a total of sixty, that'll cut it out on paper, right now it's a positive five to ten thousand dollars.
The only thing with that is it looks like we supplemented it with sixty thousand, and we really might not be needing to.
Right, but you need to have something on the book.
You won't know that answer until.
Yeah, you won't know that until.
Yeah.
But having, having half of it been left over, still infinitely better than no improvements and ending up with a balance at a high fifty-five dollars.
Oh, I agree with you. There's a lot of investments we're doing across the general funds taking a hit for it.
And those investments are going to pay off.
Sure. Yeah, and let me point out, or say, point out, I'm sure you all can see it. So if you do look at the ending, or at the pool revenue, for, what is that? That's seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, okay, so yeah, so from seventeen to eighteen, it made a eighteen thousand dollar jump in revenue. I'm just gonna skip.
What, I mean, what?
Not made, but I'm sorry, just the revenue. Looking at the revenue total.
An increase.
An increase in revenue. So from seventy to eighty-eight, I'm gonna skip.
Oh, that's showing it way up.
Right, so, I mean, I think the things that they've implemented and then the city, you know, the bathrooms and whatnot, I mean, it's definitely drawing in more crowd, the swim team and whatnot. For some of you that, I don't know if you've heard talk, I'm not saying this makes it okay, but mo, I mean, I don't know of a swimming pool that actually makes money.
This pool did not make money.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't know one that has.
No, they don't. You're right.
Last time I checked, the Kroger Aquatic was losing almost a hundred thousand a year, which, I mean, much bigger park, so. But we lose money on, but we lose money on a lot of things that we provide to citizens. Leaf pickup, we don't get any money from that. A lot of services, you know, shoveling or, or salting streets, I mean, that's a safety issue. But still, that's another service that we give to the city that we, that we totally eat. I mean, how much do we spend on salt a year?
Well, ten thousand.
Right, so I'm just saying. I, I, I wanna work as hard as we can, and I think everybody does, to make sure that it gets back to where it needs to be, but.
But at what point in time is it gonna be, how much is council gonna be willing to supplement the pool for every year?
Well.
If we're gonna get to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from here on out every year, is that something you guys wanna maintain for a pool that has, doesn't have much of a life extension?
I don't think it will, plus to add on what Mike said, I used the pool a lot when my kids were younger. My daughter is fifty years old and the bathrooms had not been updated until last year. I used to bring some of my friends with me and we hated using the restrooms. They were clean, but they looked dirty. And when I went last year and I was telling my friends, they're like, oh, we're, we'll try it now and see how it is, you know? It's needed be done, and if we would keep updating it every year, we wouldn't have the massive amount of capital outlay. And a pool in Ohio is not profitable, but it is a service.
Do we know, have any idea what the weather, if it's gonna be a hot summer or cold summer?
Farmer's almond.
This was supposed to be the worst winter ever, but it wasn't.
I do have one last thing, and we, every investment we've put into that pool has been, it's cosmetic.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the last thing that is the hard part is the structure of the pool. That is, that is what is failing. You know, the, the deep end and stuff like that, again, we're around that eighty-some thousand that we'll have to look at if we wanna make that long-term investment in the structure. Someplace. You know, I've had Patterson pulls, he's told me that the place over at Thomas Cloud Park, that splash pad that they have was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For a splash pad.
And there's no revenue coming back in.
No, there's no revenue. There's not much expense because they don't have, you know, sec, lifeguards, things like that. So, yeah, so once we, I get with this guy and we mean, go, okay, this will be a fix for ten years. That's a long-term investment.
Oh, it is.
Here's your cost.
And that's not, in my opinion, that's not astronomical.
And the big thing with that, this investment is to my water department. Water loss to the water department.
Well, chemicals.
Exactly. We treat that water before it goes in, so that'll be a huge one for the water department also. Thank you.
Rant over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, man hours.
All right, so what do, what does council wanna do with the forty thousand dollars? You got, I mean, the additional transfer from general fund.
I'd like to do it.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask you to not answer.
That's, I said, I'm not saying a word.
Thank you.
What do you think, sir?
Well, we gotta find some way to cover the costs we're gonna keep the pool.
You really don't have any options. So here's the thing, are we gonna stick with the current CIP? Do we need twenty-five thousand dollars in pool maintenance here? Do you need additional seven thousand for pumps? Is anything, can anything be done for the pool capital?
I got a question I'll address when you let you kick off. April said some pumpers are pumped and may go out.
Yeah, we have a, the pump.
Seven thousand for the CIP.
Yeah, we, we have it, we have it covered for that.
Second, we have one in five, six years or so.
We usually know on opening day what we've spent. The only thing usually after opening day that costs us any money is a pool pump replacement. Usually by that time, we've already done our repairs, our upkeep, we've fixed everything from the winter over, and usually after opening day, the only thing that usually comes out is a pool pump and motor.
Well, last year we had the emergency over the boiler.
The boiler, yeah, that was from nineteen ninety-nine, so, yeah.
And that would have pulled a profit that year if that boiler went come out. That's, yeah, good point you brought that up, because that would have pulled a profit that year.
Mike, Mike and April had done a fine job. We had run of the pool. They kept losing money. And I'll guarantee you, back then I was ready to close the pool. But we gotta find some way to keep this where we can afford it.
There were, there are price increases this year. There was.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Kitco, Mr. Bridge, please? Could we, you know, because every year, the pool's always a hot topic. I mean, it always is. There's, you know, citizens wanna know about it, it's all, it's always a hot. Could we, like, you know, when you do a water tower project, could you maybe do like a projected, you know, five-year, this is what we could do, you know, maybe, you know, whether it's moving the pool completely, rebuilding, I'm not saying we would do it, but just give us some options, like five, ten years out, you know?
I, I have the one option, obviously, re-line, and I'll, I'll know that by, after the end of March.
Okay.
I'll know that one. Relocation, I've had, I've had.
I've heard you mention.
I've had Mr. Patterson out here.
Yeah.
And, you know, without, they just can't throw a number out. You know, they got, they gotta get into some design, engineering.
Right.
It's, it's, as simple as it is, digging a hole, put some concrete in, it's not simple for them to give me a, hey, it's gonna cost you five hundred thousand dollars to build you a brand-new pool, same size, someplace else.
Right.
Not trying to all talk, but for the sake of time, do this in the day. Really, we don't have a lot of options. So is council okay with additional transferring from the general fund?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
I really don't have an answer, but yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So be it. All right, so what we'll do is we will increase that additional.
You know, I pointed at you. No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. You were first, and then you had a side question.
I didn't think you asked.
Mr. Cobb.
Yeah, she, yes.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's gonna be another, we already got twenty going in.
He said enthusiastically.
Right.
He said enthusiastically.
Twenty in at forty.
What are we putting, about forty in there? Yeah. We're gonna end up putting sixty thousand on it.
I know, and I almost, I mean, I cut back on skim from things because I ran.
I don't know. What number?
I landed burgers this year, so that's another income.
Yeah, she's adding food this year.
Expense, but I'll have.
Do you have any, you have any idea how much it's gonna cost? Do we have to increase that on too?
No, it takes that twenty-five hundred on your capital once it ends concession.
Well, I can't, well, it's twenty-five thousand for pool. So that's, okay, let's pick that.
I think we can probably.
So I thought when we talked about pool maintenance with the twenty-five thousand dollars, that twenty-five thousand dollars included the new pump. So we already have the seven thousand dollars earmarked out for a pump, so are we able to reduce that twenty-five thousand dollars for the pool maintenance? If you're saying, oh, you're gonna need nobody, if you need a pump or a motor, you already have seven thousand dollars in for a pump, how much is the motor?
That's what he's looking at.
The pump and motor is usually between six and seven, as you, as we put down here, the pump and.
So I say you guys cut just a little bit off that pool maintenance and maybe take five thousand off that pool maintenance and put it back into the concessions, so April can go out and get her stuff.
I think that's a good thing.
Where is the twenty-five thousand at?
It's in capital.
It's in capital. So that forty-five thousand dollar number you see there?
Yeah.
It's broken down, twenty-five thousand for maintenance, three thousand for defibrillator, seven thousand for a pump, five for security system, and five thousand for entry floor renovation.
Okay.
Can that five hundred dollars for training and travel come out?
Well, that was expended last year. April said no one, we have to figure out.
I don't know where they've been for.
But five hundred dollars.
Something else may have been a little over, and it drew a comment.
Maybe concession. So we were.
Probably where it came from.
So you're gonna take five thousand off the.
Oh, I don't know where it's, what do you, what is your opinion on that?
I'm sorry.
To take five thousand off pool maintenance and put it back into concessions?
So.
Pool maintenance out of the capital.
We already have it set aside for the pump. The only other thing I would really like to do is flooring, but I can.
Well, the flooring's.
Flooring's in there.
Flooring's in there for five thousand. So let's, I mean, seriously, can you guys have a really honest conversation about that twenty-five thousand dollar for pool maintenance? Can you slash it in half? Can you take it down to 10 and put 5,000 in your concessions?
If we had to do some injection in behind the deep end, if we found, something come up this winter that we don't know about. It usually runs 10 to 15.
So you should keep it?
I think you could probably take, you could take five easily off of it. 10 would be, would be stretching it unless you want to.
What are you anticipating though that's going to cost $20,000?
It's that, the deep end, it's that winter over deep end, if it's, we get in there and there's a crack or something in there.
And their steps are getting kind of rough.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to take 5,000 off the pool maintenance, right?
And you can put it in concessions?
Yeah, from the CIP.
If we put $5,000 into concessions, what do you expect the yield to be?
I usually double whatever I spend.
Yeah, I was impressed with the number that it, that it drew.
And Matt, I mean, you were, I think you were down there, Randy, just for conversation's sake, 4th of July, that pool is.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's there. Absolutely.
I just, I try to expand the menu.
So we're doing five off of the capital, right?
Make that 20. Make this 40. I want to add burgers. Make this 40. Make this 16.
Oh, where were you getting it before?
So that's not going to change the numbers.
Oh.
Because it's a wash and a wash.
We bought it.
That's definitely, you guys paid for it. That's definitely a big item, those pretzels at the pool. Plus, I know when I go, I try to go before break because there's, you can't get to the concession.
Takes my general fund down to $400,000.
We, we'll, we'll easily fit that in under that, yeah. Yeah, I think it is. We'll figure out something that, because that aluminum is, is a good board. We'll, we'll get it recoded, I think.
So where are we at?
We'll be going to cemetery when he's.
Cemetery.
All right.
So are we done with that part?
Yeah, yeah, everyone is okay with the 40 additional and transfer.
Yes.
Now. Here's the deal. I think that, like I said, in the, and last year was just automatically given over there. I say we wait until we know we're going to need it or not and see how it goes.
Well, they had almost that much in capital improvements last year, so that's why.
Just one more question.
She may have a banner year in concessions and a banner year in gate sales. It could be 90 degrees of muggy all day and that thing could only need 20 of that 60, you know? Of course, we'll put a little bit more in there so it has a little bit starting to be better. But the rest will just be sucked up by the, back into the general fund.
Who would, who would, whose job would that be? Would that be Mr. Kiko's or Derrick's when he comes on to reach out to, like, say, for just conversation? Security National Bank, would you want to be, you know, like, croak or what?
Sounds like a council job.
Would that be a council job?
That would be a great council job.
Okay.
So can you talk about reaching out to the council?
Writing up a letter, that, okay, someone on here worked on that?
That'd be a great council job.
Thank you. Is this going to help you?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest we consider having somebody from council hit Rotary and gateway business. Meetings and.
Seventeenth.
And say something there. And, I mean, you don't need to make it a letter. Just tell them you're giving them update on what the situation is.
Somebody that goes all the time.
Randy's going to be the program on the 17th.
Okay.
He's bragging about how well the city is.
Okay. Well, I knew that.
Randy loves to brag.
You couldn't come to that, you were going to come to that meeting for the Rotary, so that's why I thought you would be there.
Absolutely.
All right. Six foot under?
All right, this, uh, we'll get to cemetery. Uh, we're, we're anticipating revenues of 61,000. That includes sale of cemetery lots, grave opening and closing, and foundation construction. We do all that in-house. We do not, uh, contract any of our work at the cemetery out. Uh, going on to the next page, our expenses. Uh, we expense some of our public works director, Greg Slattery, out of the wages. And, um, on occasion, we do have some overtime, you know, weekend, uh, funerals, things like that. Of course, uh, the fringe benefits are the pro-rata share, or portion of the wages. Travel training, CDL testing, um, again, for the employees that we have out there required to have. Um, gas, electric, it's just the, the house we have out there and the one barn. Um, maintenance of facilities, maintenance of infrastructure and equipment. Uh, this goes into keeping the cemetery dump truck, uh, the lawn mowers, the backhoe, uh, the mini backhoe that we have out there, and which includes our liability insurance to cover all that equipment. Um, office supplies, operational supplies, uniforms for one person, um, fuel, repair and maintenance supplies, small tools. Those are all items that Greg and/or whoever's helping him will utilize to do the daily functions of the cemetery. Capital outlay, um, was, was previously approved for 37.5, but at the last council meeting, it was, uh, raised to amend the CIP via Mr. Bridge. 69,500 to include, um, the new truck via ordinance. Um, and with miscellaneous, $1,000, the expenses are to be 132,150. So if you go to the next page, our beginning balance from 2019 was 83,315. Uh, current cemetery revenue is 61,000 and to expend 132,150, that would have us at an estimated ending cemetery balance of $12,165.
I don't plan on visiting anytime soon.
Cemetery, you want to come?
No, I'm good. It's creepy.
So you guys get three grave sites.
Oh, yeah.
Do I get the money back from one hour I bought?
Kidding, YouTube.
I'm not trying to be, uh, doom and gloom, but is there a lot of space left in the cemetery?
We do, we had bought some acreage close to, um, holder oil in that back corner. We do have some room there. I, I'd have to get with Greg to find out what you, what you consider that estimated time, but there is some, I think it's 10, 15 years at least on the acreage that we have.
How many stones are out there, just ballpark?
I have no idea.
No clue? At least 20?
Yeah, a lot. Um, if there's no questions on there, there are some water and wastewater, extra capitals. Those are usually where tap fees come in and we use those to expend towards, which are, they're really small amounts. Um, cemetery perpetual care, portion of grave sales, uh, go into it. That basically, what cemetery perpetual care is, um, is to fund the cemetery the day that it basically gets full and there's no revenues anymore, that the perpetual care will take care of that cemetery in perpetuity with those revenues. And really, I think, but I don't have anything else on that I typically deal with.
And do you have any questions on cemetery perpetual care? Wait a minute, we hit some, you hit cemetery perpetual care, right?
Yeah.
So there's 10 to 15 years of life left?
At, at minimum, um, I'm pretty sure, but I'll give it Greg because that's kind of a, I usually don't think about that.
That's an interesting question.
We did it when we purchased the land way back when, but.
As long as the coronavirus stays away.
And we bought five acres is what we bought back there.
We just want them by the lots. They don't have to move in right away.
Yeah.
Okay, so we go to cemetery perpetual care, guys? I'm going to start kicking it up a little bit. We've got about an hour left. Is that okay with everyone?
So where are we going to?
Um, what we're going to do is in honor of our fire chief.
Are you heading out, Mr. Kiko?
Have a long day as well.
Are you leaving?
No, no, I'm good for today.
Oh, okay.
No, we're trying to get it done today.
No, 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 I'm good. I, he was asking if I'm.
I forgot. I was too busy eating cookies.
Yeah, me too. Those were good cookies.
Okay, so, uh, 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 emergency ambulance capital.
About where we at?
Um, about that many pages in?
Okay. What is it again?
It's page 13.
Pretty close to the middle, didn't you?
I'm doing it. I just remembered. I was like, Mike, I was eating cookies.
Pretty close to the middle.
Yeah.
That's after the street improvement levy balance.
Yeah.
13. Emergency ambulance operating, page 13.
Capital. Fire chief, you want it? You got it?
Um.
We want me to do it? Don't matter. It's up to you.
You go do it and I follow. If you need Mel to come in on anything.
All right. All right.
You're going to say quicker than I would.
212, uh, revenue. We really can't do anything with those. Debbie gets those based off, uh, estimated auditor resources that we get. Estimated resources. So we look at the capital there. Um, emergency ambulance capital really is there just for that. It's for capital purposes. So when we look at our, uh, capital for ambulance, let me pull that up real quick. Apologize for my delay. EMS capital. So we have got $260,000 in there?
Yes, that's for the medic load system and the new cot.
Okay, we approved at the 2024 EMS capital expenses, a total of $69,000. So where is the 260 coming in?
We chose to, because of the, um, because of what the carryover balances were, we chose to take the, uh, particular on the $200,000.
214,000.
Yeah, just switching the fund that's coming out of because of the, um, carryover balances would, it helps that. So instead of it being. Oh, don't get confused.
For what? Fire capital?
We had, um, where was the, that medic?
You know, medic should have been split between your five, uh, medic should have been, a new medic is split between fire and EMS. All right, no, it was from out of last, the medic, what does go to the 2019 CIP? Because that's when it was allocated, and the half the allocators don't let the CIP says. Um, so the 2019 CIP. 45,000 for the new medic out of fire operating. And then you had council approve $800,000 from emergency ambulance operating, like 213. So that was approved. And then we have two, fund 212 had a 60,000. Fund 213 had 100,000. Yes, so basically you spent.
We haven't paid for the medic yet.
All that carried over.
Now we got them.
So we decided instead of paying it out of.
But when we do, we have to now amend.
Right, well, we would, you, yes.
Well, I'm, there's a mandate to 2020. The decision was made, we should have amended the 2019 CIP, which would have been done at the last week. So we need.
Okay, if that's the way you do it.
Well, yeah, because they 2019 earmarked it. It didn't come out of the 2020 funds.
It just carries.
I understand it carries on the books. We have the legislation to.
So, so basically your CIP here is not a, um, if you're saying if you don't spend it, maybe you go back and amend your CIP because it's a capital improvement project plan. That's what I'm trying to understand how you do it here. So I make sure I do this correctly.
Yes, if it's earmarked, if they don't, you have to go back and then just look. And then we have the 2020.
Then we'll keep it the way it was then and there's no reason to go back and do 219. That's, that's, I mean, I don't want to make eggs to work on anything.
All right.
Well, yeah, we just, I mean.
Well, you don't, where's it, where's it listed in your 2020?
Within that, within that 260 on the 212.
But you have that on your books. We passed the 2020 CIP a few months ago. And that carryover balance is not allocated. So right now you do not have the authority to spend any funds out of the 2020 capital improvement. It's fine. We'll just have to go back and then.
Oh, yes.
Because right now you got fire.
$100,000 that we're kind of putting in there to sort of, you know, continue to build for the.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so we got, okay, so we got.
There should be more cookies left, but those two girls in the back, I think, took like five of them.
Three, half the one in the red shirt.
Yeah, one in the red shirt cookie.
All right, so the numbers are correct on here. We got to.
Cookies, cookie stop.
Load them up. So the numbers are right, the way they want to do it on the budget. I have some legislators who have to do it correct in the back. So, but that being said, we can still focus on these numbers. Um, so capital, they're looking to do 260. Um, you want to explain that? 260,000 to cover the new, the price of the new medic, which I also gave all the council. That is the final draft of what the graphics and everything with the new medic will look like. Um, and we'll also cover the load system for the automatic, uh, load for the cot and the new cot. For, for that new medic. That way, that system can be purchased and dropped shipped to drawn, then to install it as the medic is built.
When are you expecting everything?
Um, we're hoping for the end of April, first of May. It, right now, it's just now going into, um, beginning of the build stage. And when they build this medic, it's not like they go out and have a box pre-made. They start from the floor up. They have, they have a composite floor. There's no wood at all in this medic. It's a composite and then they start welding the walls, welding the cabinets. There's no, uh, screws or anything inside. It's all weld. That's because it stays in the planning stage for three months. That way they know they got everything right before they, uh, they actually start, start the build. Like I said, that'll go through for that. And then if you go on down, beginning in, uh, total emergency ambulance, 324, emergency, um, the one down, and then you have wages. And that's one of our biggest hits. To be honest with you, it's our wages for, for the crews.
Are you on, were the wages, say, 75,000?
Or 600,000.
600,000. 600,000.
600,000.
Oh, okay.
That's our biggest hit. I mean, it is. Um, with the, with the new levy, we did increase our salaries. Uh, we brought our paramedics up to 14. We are still not equal to what surrounding departments are. We're about a dollar to $2 shy of what they are. Uh, the biggest draw that we have is we work more hours part-time than what the other departments do. We have no overtime. And then the rest of social security, that type of thing. Uh, going on down, um, gas, electric, uh, auditor, physical exams. Uh, we did add that in this year, physical exams, to start doing a, uh, it'll be a random drug testing every quarter. So many of the firefighters will be, nasal be pulled and left to run the drug test, which is something very common with, uh, all departments. Uh, dispatching services, EMS billing, that's what we pay to have our bills, EMS billing taken care of. We don't do it ourselves. Maintenance of facilities on that, on the MS side. Again, you have the same thing on the MS side as you do on the fire side. It is more or less of a mirror of each other, so we, we kind of split the funds in, in between the two, the two groups. Maintenance of facility, 5,000. Uh, what we're looking at this year is doing a little bit of upkeep, more in the station. Maintenance of equipment, that's a big hit because anything we have done to this apparatus, it costs. We had a brake job done on the ladder truck this year and that, on the, just for the front brakes, and it was $3,000. So anything down on these equipment, it, it's expensive. Insurance liabilities. And then membership dues, that type of thing. We do belong to a lot of different organizations also, like, uh, the Ohio Firefighters Association, those type of things. If we don't belong to those groups, then we get kicked out of the AFG grants, that type of thing, the grant, uh, process. Then in off supplies, uh, operational supplies, of course, just like any of the other groups, it's basically to cover quite a few, uh, few things. Uniform and personal safety equipment, uh, T-shirts, uniform shirts, uniform trousers, that type of thing for the crews. Uh, job shirts for winter time, that type of thing. Uh, medical supplies is another big hit. Anything that to do with medical, the cost is probably three times of what it normally would be because it says medical. For example, we, we use what's called an IO needle. Basically drill into a patient's bone with a needle to do an IV, if it's a full arrest, that type of thing. And, um, it's a quicker way to get the drugs into their system, that type of thing, especially on a full arrest. A box of five of those needles is $550. And there's only one company that sells them.
Wow. Maybe we should start a company.
Yeah, so, and like I said, anything medical, they tack a price tag on. Um, fuel, repair and maintenance, um, small tool and equipment, or chainsaw, or K-12 saws, that type of thing, we, if they need to be worked on, that type of thing. And then capital outlay, we also had 39,000, the capital outlay. And then capital outlay, we also had thirty-nine thousand, the capital outlay. Uh, what that is going to encompass is basically our upgrade from radio, radios, like our handhelds, that type of thing, buying additional batteries, that type of thing, plus also too, looking at purchasing a new battalion vehicle, or almost a staff vehicle, not a battalion vehicle, uh, a new staff vehicle. What we had thought we were going to be able to do this, this year, um, maybe getting the charger that the deputies weren't going to use anymore is not going to happen since council brought on a fifth deputy. Uh, so we're going to, we need to look at buying another vehicle to replace the Dodge pickup truck, it's pretty much on its last leg. And right before this meeting, I was able to speak with Chrysler dealer down here, and it looks like we can get into a, a brand-new twenty-twenty Durango for just shy of thirty-five thousand. And, so-
Is that part of the capital, uh, like-
Capital outlay, that thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, so that's included, okay.
And miscellaneous a thousand, so that, you know, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten. There's a total of one forty-two, six eighty-six. And then fire capital, basically same thing, taxes, that type of thing, you go into equipment. Capital outlay, a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. We also look at state grants that we try to get to recoup some of those, those funds. The capital lay, that one, um, a hundred-and-thirty-six is going to entail new equipment for the rigs, new, uh, tools, new hose, new nozzles, that type of thing. Our hose is getting it pointed out, with the hose, it has a life shelf life of fifteen years, so a lot of our hose is starting to get that, reach that lifetime span, and we have to replace it and up up and down. Am I forgetting anything?
Yes, I'm out of the hundred-and, um, thirty-six.
One thirty-six.
He has to replace gear.
Yeah.
So, we, um, if we, how many sets?
We, we averaged, we selected, or suggested to buy five sets of new gear each year. That keeps us with gear installed, in case I get a firefighter, their gear gets destroyed or contaminated on the scene, I can replace that, that gear. Plus also, every ten years, whether the gear's good or not, I have to take it out of service because its, uh, use life is only ten years. That's from helmet all the way down the boot. Yeah, and also saving for the new, uh, new engine. We're looking to try to buy a new engine in twenty, probably twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three, uh, and putting that money back each year a little bit to compensate for that. And then-
The levy's five years long, right?
Excuse me?
The levy's only good for five years, right?
Five years, that's the reason we're going to have to revisit that at that time.
Right, what year are you in now?
We're in the second year of the levy.
One of the things I suggested you guys when the levy passed was, you know, kind of leave a year where you're not buying any big capital projects, just in case it doesn't get rid, in the likelihood it doesn't, it's slim to none, because they're-
Right, well, after this year, we're not looking at buying any-
So how many years are you going to have of revenue, levy, additional revenue coming in where you're not expending for big capital, for, for, kind of get that pad up, just in case you need it?
Three.
You have three years of-
Because after buying the pneumatic this year, we're not planning on buying, uh, another medic or anything like that.
You bought the medic, and then you bought a fire engine.
No, no, that's, we're not buying a fire engine in this year.
Oh, you're just saving up for it.
Saving up for it, right.
For how long?
For, for a new engine, we're probably going to be saving up for four years.
When's the levy over?
Three.
Twenty-twenty-three, it's the same year they're done, they're putting away for it. So, they don't have a year where they don't have, they're not saving or buying a big capital purchase, which is fine, that was the recommendation I made to you guys, because right now, if that levy don't pass, you're not getting additional revenue for twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
But if it doesn't pass, that's all.
Well, if it doesn't pass, they can't purchase it, but the cash we save, that's basically what we're saving. I mean, that's why, if we, yeah, if we're saving it, the money's sitting there, it'll be in the carryover, and of course, that's in twenty-twenty-four, if the levy passed, and obviously, we'll spend our cash on fire engine at that point, so that's why it's, that's why you do it.
Yeah, I want to say something, Chief.
Oh, go ahead.
Chief, put your dolls alive for the fire.
Dolls alive right now are, are in good condition, because we have a maintenance program for them every year. Uh, we are looking at the same ti, the year frame times that we're, um, looking at purchasing new engine in, in those years. We're looking at replacing those power tools with the new ones that are electric, or as I could say, battery-operated, uh, which is a lot more versatile, and a lot less maintenance, and a lot less cost, or at, the initial cost we had before, but they're a lot less cost. We can go to Lowe's and buy a DeWalt battery and put in it, and it works, and I don't have to buy the battery from, you know-
Right, well, I'm just concerned, I mean, when I was on, I seen a few times, people went out, arms went down, and it's something we gotta wait for me to wait, come up and set the car.
Right, well, and that's, that's where we, what we would do is, once we buy this new, buy a new set of tools, we would take the set that we, as long as they're still in operation, which I don't see why they wouldn't be, is, is, like I said, we do keep a good maintenance on them, and we don't use them that often, um, they would go as a reserve set, so that way, we would have a capability of having two sets.
It's on camera.
Yeah, actually, sir, please do.
April's standing in front of him.
Don't you dare. And like I said, if you look at some of the line items, like I said, they mirror each other from the ambulance to fire, um, training, travel, that type of thing. We do send some, try to send some of our guys to classes, um, and some of our, our crew takes, will take courses, um, like I have one firefighter pointing to take a plans-for-you course, which is fine. Only thing that, what we do is, if we pay totally for their course, that we require them to sign a letter saying that they'll, they'll work for the division for two years. And if they quit within that two years, they, they have to reimburse the division for that course, so. Fire prevention, uh, three thousand dollars we put in there. I know that seems like a lot of money for fire prevention, but it's not. Uh, the little things that we hand out to the kids and to the public, uh, when you start looking and have to purchasing, purchasing those, they, it looks neat and easy, because they're only like fifty-nine cents a piece, but when you start buying three hundred of them at a time, or two hundred of them at a time, uh, like the little plastic helmets that we carry, that type of thing, it eats that budget up real quick, real quick. And we do, we use that not only just for fire prevention week, but we also use it through the year, to have those things on, onboard, hand out to the public, hand out to kids and stuff. And other stuff, the same thing, postal, physical exams, uh, we put two thousand in that, again, covering for that. Dispatch services, the dispatch service, again, is split in between the fire and the EMS, uh, thirteen thousand is, comes out the fireside, and the other side comes out the EMS side. Maintenance of facility, again, uh, maintenance of equipment, uh, twenty-five thousand, again. And one thing also hurts us with our maintenance of equipment is the age of our fleet. The, our frontline fire engine's twenty-one years old. That's old for an engine. Ladder truck is sixteen years old. Our medic, the frontline medic right now is almost nine years old, and is right shy of a hundred-and-eighty thousand miles on it. And that's just due to our transport distances. Going to the valley, one trip to Miami Valley and back, forty miles round trip for us. So when you're doing that two or three times a day. Insurance, membership dues, again, um, supplies, operational supplies, uniforms, again, for the crews, fuel, repair, maintenance supplies, small tools and equipment. We try, when I, when I do POs, I try my best to allocate out of both sides of the house for, for each PO, so that way, I'm kind of pulling from both sides of the fence, uh, to find out if it's open. Uh, there's very few things on here that I, that I have to pull out of one side, that's the only thing really, is like medical supplies, that type of thing, that's the only one I can't justify really pulling out of fireside. But capital outlay, miscellaneous in the capital outlay, we have eighty-two thousand five hundred, that was for the, um-
That is for miscellaneous tools, uh, fire station renovations, when again, because I think you said we need, well, there's twenty-five thousand dollars for roof repairs.
Right.
Twenty-five for, another twenty-five for renovation in the system. There's ten thousand for new computers and equipment, and a thermal imaging camera at seventy-five hundred dollars.
We have one image, thermal imaging camera now that's getting aged, um, and so we'll be purchasing another one, that'll give us two. Reason for that is if, a lot of times, those pieces of apparatus may not go to the fire. Uh, if we get bumped out of mutual aid, say to Bethel Townes or Bethel Miami, something like that, they're only going to usually call for one piece, probably won't call for the truck. Right now, the, the thermal imager is carried on the engine. This way, they have one, and also, so on, a lot of times on the scene, you can use two thermal imaging cameras very easily. Uh, what that camera does, it allows us, when we're inside the building, we can look for hot spots in walls, we can also look for victims, that type of thing. It has multiple uses, but that's just the main ones. And our computers right now, the newest desktop computer in the station right now is mine, and it's, it's eight years old.
That's old for a computer.
Yeah, it is, and the computer that's behind you is one of the ones that we replaced, uh, that's our training, that's used for the training computer, it's hooked in with the smart board, that one's very important, needs to be updated, uh, mine, and then the computer in the back in the office for the assistant chief and captains. And then we'll take the, the best computer out of what we have left, and put it in the dayroom for the crews, they use, they use it for, because all of our reporting is, is electronic, we don't use it really any paper anymore at all for our reports, so they do a report here and set, and type the report, and they have a, a block amount of time to get the report done, and they have to fax that report to the receiving hospital they took the patient to. So that's where, that's where our computers stand. And it also shows the, the levies. Anything I'm missing, Debbie, or, or Ms. Bridge?
Good job.
Any questions on what we're trying to do, or, um, we're, we do have a five-year plan, uh, what we're wanting to look forward to trying to do. We do have the Elizabeth Township contract for another year and a half, um, to be honest, we're seriously looking at when that timeframe comes up, whether or not we're going to need it or not.
Thank you, Chief.
You good?
Looks like it.
Okay. Well, let me take a, let me try to re, where are we at here? Health levy, um, that's a wash-in, wash-out, we have a levy for that, we get, we collect the money, then we send it out to Clark County, mine health district, and it's just washed. Any questions on the health levy? Nope. Okay, so then we get to the point five percent police levy, uh, this one is going to be, this is not updated. So when we look at the police levy revenue, uh, Debbie put five thousand there, I actually added thirty thousand onto that, you haven't, um, so really, that revenue on the green side should be five hundred and thirty thousand, because I think we'll collect a little bit more.
So total revenue is projected-
Yeah, five hundred and thirty.
Five thirty?
Mm-hmm, yep. And then, this is the first year that we have five deputies on, so we had to go in and change our contractual. So when we see that down at the expenses, expenses, it's a big number, five hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Now, don't let that scare you, because what that is, how they bill us for the contract for the deputies. We have five deputies, they are billing us for five top-step deputies, and also five deputies that we are assuming have a insurance-
Full family insurance.
Full family insurance plan, so that right there is the worst-case scenario, just based off the contract of deputies. That price also includes, excuse me, around twelve thousand, one hundred dollars for the vehicle lease that council wants to do opposed to buying that car. That vehicle lease also includes their supplies and their fuel, so we have additional cost savings with that as well. Um, the other stuff, it's kind of just, we just kind of mirror from year to year, uh, maintenance of equipment, contractual, anyone have any questions on any of those line items? Contractual materials and supplies, capital outlay, that does consist of- I know there's some money in there for cruiser cans, um, there is not money in there for GPS.
I thought I was getting ready to ask you.
That may be difficult.
But GPS?
Yes. So, where's my capital for, please? Not even in the right direction. Do you have yours pulled up over there? Awesome, thank you, Harry.
Bam, right there.
Uh, seventeen thousand, five hundred for equipment upgrades, twelve thousand for a substation relocation renovation, that I would love to stay in there, and then thirty thousand for cruiser cans, um, so-
What was the second, the relocate, what was it?
Substation relocation or renovation.
How much?
Twelve thousand.
Relocation, you mean?
Move it, but it's not going to happen before I know it.
Okay.
I would like to honestly get a little, some keep hardwood floor in there, paint the walls white, um, until we have a really discussion about where they're going to go.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying, I'd like to do just a band-aid fix, because the carpet over there is horrible. Not really that big of a front of the room, I don't know how much going to cost to keep laying that hardwood in there, have wood handling in there. The goal is to, when we go and move into a new city building and get some new furniture, a lot of that old stuff we have, turn that city building into recycled down here, they're desperately falling apart. So, um, we do need to put a little bit of money into that section. I don't think we're quite there yet for finding the location, tearing it down, um, because we're making an investment into fifth deputy this year. So, at some point in time, a few down the road, you guys have to decide, you guys want to, where are you going to do that substation, and we can change fifth deputy? You're going to take that fifth deputy off, start saving for a new substation, how you guys want to do it. Still has the opportunity to purchase our current building, if that's what council wants to do down the road out of these funds, uh, but that's currently what it says. Any questions or discussion on anything with the police levy?
Ms. Bridge, does that contractual include the extra duty? When, when you have extra duty, some, I was curious.
Uh, no, but there should be a line item for that, that we did. That's usually extended out of miscellaneous, but there isn't any last, three thousand in there for miscellaneous. So, yeah, well, I'll probably pump some money in there for somewhere. Why wasn't my brother this? I didn't think that. Um- I would probably, Debbie, where do we put that? Because it's not a contract, it's just for extra duty.
You triggered me when you said the twelve thousand.
No, I got you, yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's where she takes it out of, that's-
She probably did, because it's, we never spend, we never spend that much, because we don't have that pool.
Pay the extra duty on Fourth of July, I'm pretty sure.
That just comes out of that, are we okay with that? Because if we do end up getting five deputies, with five in the health insurance plan, that's going to be the max, so I think that's- That's all I can hope it doesn't happen for some reason. Yeah, we're good. Yeah, we'll say that they'll put another hundred thousand dollars in there, a hundred twenty, that they're definitely, yeah, I'll think they'll be fine. We're good.
So my two things on the police as well, and, yeah, I mean, I, it's all going to depend on new move, what kind of possible option they would give us on a building for purchase. I think it'd be a great idea if, if the price is right.
Well, you have to, well, it's true, because like I said, if we're going to be downtown, and that business behind us, if it chooses to go, I would like council to buy that, and have council managers there too. So that way, you have a, you have city building, you know, um, but that's something that's going to be helpful.
Yeah, they seem to be thriving.
And you-
They seem to be thriving, when I went by there, when we had a, I think it was the Christmas tree lining or something, I think it was a Christmas tree lining, they had a lot of people in there.
Yeah, they do like the Dungeon and Dragons games and stuff like that, you know, and we're not going to force them out by any means, because it happens, it's out that way, great.
But you said you'd be, problem with GPS?
Um, I heard it's very expensive, I really haven't researched that much, um, they are our cars, um, but it would-
Maybe just for future-
I think that's the reason why we wanted to do that, so I would just respect that, maybe we just, we'll see how the issue goes, and then reanalyze that. I would like to look at cruiser cans, um, see what we can do with that.
What'd we put in there for that?
Thirty thousand.
Seems that expensive, yeah.
I don't know if it was a blind number, I don't remember researching it for exactly the-
Yeah, I remember we talked, yeah. Yeah, I remember we talked, yeah.
You know, so, but, yeah. Is anyone okay with that? Okay, moving on. General bond retirement, this is for some of the bonds that we have. Basically, the general fund supports these, so every year, we transfer out from the general fund to pay these bond retirements. And it's usually a wash, we transfer money in, we transfer out. That also includes for the next page on the Twin Creek infrastructure bond retirement. That is, we do get a little bit of revenue in from the assessments, but then the general fund ends up supplementing that. So it's usually a wash-in, wash-out. I would like for you to pay attention to that end of fund balance, which is $334,205. When I first became city manager, me and the former law director, subjects a very long overdue support basis, and we got some settlements out of that. We also got some loan reutilization money. That's what that money is what we see there now. Prior council, we've been backing that up, putting it towards the city building. I will also report that this moving, we're probably sending all out to the 25, also have that money to put towards the balance. It's really what's going to be the best thing to the fund. It's going to be to put that money down, to reduce the much-plated payment, or they're going to be best to just put a city building for you to pay tax or result in, or don't have to take that money. There is, everyone pay attention to that. So like I said, either November 2020, we'll use it, or we will use it for... Water operating, Mr. Kiko already did that, and we appreciate him for that. So let's just keep on going through till the end here, and I think we covered most of this. Street lighting, we did cemetery, right?
Yes.
Waste water capital improvement, those are 7% of consumer charges, that is something that, once that wastewater fund gets healthy again, we're going to have to put that in. Because really, it can go for capital, we can go for all kinds of stuff. We do have some money left over in, nobody already spent that out, okay, good. All right, did you go over that fund?
Which one?
Oh, you did? Okay, got you. I didn't have a check mark, thank you. So, street lighting, this is the thing for our street lighting assessment. So it is usually a wash, money in, money out. This one carries a balance of about 47, and we are taking the $10,000 out of this one here. So the LED upgrade, that'll be decided. So this one, actually, we're going to go back and take $10,000 or $11,000 out of it, because you guys agreed to do the LED changeout with Miami Valley Lighting, that's going to cost around $10,000. So we originally had that coming out of our free funding, that's going to be amended and taken out, and we're going to pay for that, having to, that's $47,000. So what we'll do is just take that out, free lighting, and that's what we're going to pay for, and we'll just collect our revenue and just put it back out when we assess our... Council okay with that? Yeah, okay. The other stuff, you may see these funds that have nothing on them, a dollar on them, $102,000. Debbie is going to make these inactive, we'll get the money out if we can. Water meter upgrade, I don't know how we're going to do with that, that's a fund created for the water meter, that's $102,000. But some of these funds that you see here, we kept them on here for a purpose, they're no balance, they're inactive funds, they're not going to be included in, there's no sense of wasting the light items for something that doesn't have any revenue in it. But for the newer council members, we definitely wanted you to kind of see those funds. Ending waterworks capital balance, $10,000.
Yes, that's our, that's our reserve.
Okay, got you. So we're good on that, we're not touching, we're not touching any of that?
Mm-mm.
Okay. And then we have about $275,000 in wastewater equipment replacement balance, so, and then... Wastewater equipment replacement, are you using this $5,000?
Yeah, that's the five we're going to use for...
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha. And the same thing with the... Awesome. So let's go back to the front page.
Can I, while you're talking about all these, what is this CDBG?
That is Community Development Block Grant, and that is our federally funded block grant program that we use, and we had some funds that were from a project prior, and we actually just spent the rest to the county, because they, like, they overpaid us for a particular project, and we had to reimburse. So we just reimbursed out of that line item, so it wouldn't impact our general fund.
We shouldn't have to do that.
All right, so, all right, let's jump to, we'll say, planning for last, okay? And then we'll go to parks, we already did, oh, law director. Law director is going to be, I think, about, one, two, one, two, three, four pages back at the very top, and it's just a few lines.
I think it's five.
Five. So right now, we had expended about $80,000 with Lynette, I am not putting that number for Jake, but I'm looking at... I don't know what Jake's going to be at the year-end, I don't think he's going to come close to 60, but we are seeing a drop from Haiti that we already allocated for Lynette, and then we'll go ahead and put 60 in there for Jake, for any unforeseen issues that we may come across. That is up for negotiation with council, if you guys so choose to do that. You good with 60? Good, 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 good. You good with 60, sir?
Yeah.
Awesome. So we already did parks?
Did you say, what, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know what fund it would be. I know there was interest in new decorations on Main Street.
That is, we're getting to that.
Okay, I didn't know what fund it would be in.
Nope, nope, we'll land the building.
So where are we going now?
We did parks already, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now you're going to special events, parks and rec board, and you guys have fun with that.
Where's it at?
After parks.
Oh, special, oh, parks, okay.
So parks expense.
Page six.
Special events, parks and rec board.
So...
You have miscellaneous special events for $10,000, you can have a fireworks for... Special events would be the parks and rec, they want to do Easter egg hunts, they want to do this, they want to do that, that's what that would come out of. Fireworks are street lighting, parks and rec fireworks. Now, with that said, fireworks, parks and rec board wants to be for a constable to come in, you're a food truck, that would come out of that. But as far as how much you guys want your parks and rec to deal with this year, that would be under the special events.
I think parks and rec, I was thinking, start out at $5,000, let's see what they do.
I agree.
We've given them $10,000, $15,000, they've never done nothing.
No.
Well, they haven't been able to do anything, because they haven't had a forum, and their Easter egg hunt is probably about six of that $5,000, they use 600 of that $5,000.
Oh, 600?
That's what I said.
I was going to say 6,000.
$5,000 for parks and rec.
And they'll still have some money to work on fireworks if they do that.
What do you mean if they do that?
If they take away the fireworks.
I'm not going to be around if they take over.
I'm not getting in the middle of it.
Apparently, me neither, so, and I even said that.
I'll get in the middle of it.
I'm not.
I was similar with where he was, I was thinking five, just getting some, you know, some testing water to see how they do.
And, and...
Right. Well, I know that...
$10,000 in the pool.
Yeah.
And I think that they, some of them have some stuff going on. I don't know how it's going to go, I know that, I'm very curious about how the parks and rec board is going to be getting, to have some...
And I think he's going to bring some...
Yeah.
Oh, I do too.
I don't want to sell them too short, but I don't want to give them a longer...
There was a budget session a couple of years ago.
I think that had to do with the current makeup of the factory when they were...
Yeah, I think Mr.... Five, not the yours, I mean, now, I'm just saying.
I really think five is seven, four more than ten to fifteen, to give them, even to do some things.
I don't want to do more than...
And we still, we still have overall, right?
You guys are your board to you?
That's what I'm saying. So, I mean, if they come and said, we want to spend $8,000, not they would, they want to get $10,000, of course, we're going to say no.
Yeah, because I'd be like...
Right.
Even if we give them $10,000, then we still have to prove what they spend, right?
We can't. They have a forecast.
Okay, we can or we can deny it, right?
And you're, you and Mr., is it Mr. Gremm, give me backup?
But it's not like they, them two could say, no, you're not doing this in their meeting. They would have to, that parks and rec, they have to come to the council, the whole would have to do it, but having two, having a council, I think, will help guide them, you know?
I was just pulling it down.
Okay, we're going down the line. You go, 10?
I...
Can I ask a question before we get to all of this?
How, how do, I mean, they did not come to council to spend money, this, so how are we to...
I think they have, I'm not going to interrupt you, but they have a parks and rec bylaw that they need to follow.
Is it, what, what is it?
When they go to expend something, what they need to do, you need to get a hold of me, and I will fill out a purpose, that's, and you can wait till they get approval on that person.
From who?
From finance department.
That's true, what you're saying, but at that point, I'm just identifying that the funds are here, I'm not making a decision on what they can buy. So, you know, if they come in and say, you know, they have bills for $8,000, and I say, okay, there's 10 there, so what, I'm not policing that, so who is policing? I guess that's where the...
Yeah.
She's asking, so, you know...
That's my question, is how does it get policed? With the budget, the budget they have.
Right, one of you two will be there.
I think that, you know, with the liaisons, and you two, the two, their media, they're going to input what they're doing, what they're spending. Once you hear the numbers, hold it, guys, you can only spend this much, we've got to revise the plan. At that point, they're going to have to revise what they're doing and how they're doing it. If they run out of $5,000, then they're going to have to come back and cancel.
If we gave them 10, they wouldn't have to, they'd go up to 10.
Yeah.
Just to add to what I was saying, so, so it was partly, I'll take some, it's partly my fault, because when I saw the expenses coming in on what they ordered, it is my job to make sure we don't spend $800 for a hammer. It is my job to see that we spend physically responsible. So when I saw the bag of candy at $52, I went to Randy and I said, what's going on here? This is, why is that kind of expense for one bag of candy? So that's where it kind of started, so, I mean, when the purchasers come to me, I'll be able, I mean, I don't get to say what, but I do get to kind of say, wow, you know, can we find something a little less expensive, or, you know, that? So you will get noticed from me if I see something way out of line, just like the bag of candy, you know? That's, that's the only thing I saw. But, so, in the future, as we go forward, I'll be able to bring that to your, Randy's attention, but...
Kind of related to that, does, does the city, I mean, is there a way, one of the things we were saying is if you'd hit the Amazon Prime thing, there would have been no problem, you know?
That's not necessarily true. When she, I don't know, rehash this, but she submitted the list, we just assumed the list was betted to be the best price scenario. So when she shared the list, we just add the cart. I politely said to you guys, I'm not there, they don't report to me, I don't, I just assumed when they had everything done, that they would have done the best price possible. I don't care how much their event is, if they want to spend $800 on the Easter egg event, that's between you guys and them. Debbie nailed it right on the head, when they go and they spend $54 on a bag of candy, we could have got a Walmart for $8.98, so she goes, and it goes to the council meeting that were putting hairs over $200, that's what Debbie's job is to do. So if we see something come in, and it's kind of like, whoa, what's going on, we have a, Debbie's got a lot of experience, Howie's got a lot of experience, I got some experience of knowing how much generally things should cost. Debbie picked up on it right off the bat, listen, there's an egg company that can give you $1,000 free filled eggs for 120 bucks. So we suggested that to them, instead of going in and didn't lie. So, yeah, at the end of the day, whatever they choose, that's between you guys, but yeah, if they come back and it's a complete out-of-bound price, we're going to say something.
Well, but, this is the only board we have that spends money.
Right.
We need to have some kind of overseeing of this.
Right there.
And... But we don't have any official... That's right, there's no...
Not, not in their meeting, but then you can say, we're going to go to a council and then discuss this.
Then you, then you tell them, if you have expenses, those bills are submitted to the council for approval. Have a written procedure so that...
They have parks and rec bylaws, and they're not following them, so I would advise...
Oh, okay.
This is Councilman Hopkins and the Health...
Get a copy of it.
Look at those bylaws. They should not be expending money until that group itself says, yes, we have the group approved this.
Okay.
One person can't be...
Can't make that decision.
Yeah, it's no different than you guys, they're, they're an extension to city council, they are bound by the same sunshine rules and same operational rules that you guys are. One person out of that group cannot make the decision.
It sounds like she didn't have experience with that, so...
And that's what I said, it's council meeting. This was a learning curve, and hopefully, from here on out, it won't be a bother.
Yeah.
And then we're going to be on it, and I talked to her and told her that we'll help her with the rules.
So, okay, so...
I'm just going to make sure I know them.
Okay. Did you say what you wanted to do?
They got five, they got 10, they got five. Five, 10, five.
I'll go with 10. I mean, I want to give them the benefit of the doubt and see if they can produce.
I'm kind of on the fence.
And you're going to be there to police it anyway, so...
I know, I'll, I'll do 10.
Since one of us will be there, even I don't know.
Now, we better make sure we do our job.
That's right.
Okay, what about fireworks? We got $15,000 for fireworks.
I want to see that increase a little bit.
For what?
Seventeen.
You good for 17 on fireworks?
Yeah. Leave it alone.
Oh, okay.
Well, can I say, while I want to raise it? Last year, where we had them parking out in the grass, a lot of them were urinating in the grass, we've got to get more porta-johns out there.
Mm-hmm, or better people to attend.
Well, you can tell them if they come in or not, you know?
Well, if they buy out all the liquor at the store, they have to have someone to get rid of it.
Yeah, but that didn't come out of us.
That comes out of the, yeah.
No, we had, we paid, we paid for it.
No, no, we do, but it comes out of different funds.
Comes out of different funds, I think.
Plus, we need to get a couple more dumpsters down there, because they filled up the baseball dumpsters, did we ever pay for that?
I don't know, I, I don't deal with things.
That would never, it never submitted.
Okay, so I'm going to go with a $20,000 fireworks. Because, because what she's going to, we have to pay for the contract of itself, and if no business donates, that's going to be 15, 16, probably right there. Just for the contract itself. Then you got porta-johns, you got food trucks, you got all kinds of stuff.
Well, food trucks, if you pull in food trucks...
Actually, food trucks, if they know they're coming to a small bit, will require a small down the panel.
I had, had one in there last year, did not charge them.
That's just him, that's yours. I have a friend who owns a food truck, but he goes to small towns, he requires a down...
When you go to bring food trucks in, you don't want to bring more than three into a small function. Any more than that, they all fight, they all pull out.
Yeah, I've never paid them to come.
And if, what we done last year, we didn't charge them. We let them come in and set up, and we don't pay for any food trucks.
Well, let me, let me throw this out. Um, the Farmers Market Committee is wanting to do something that night, or I think I already mentioned that little. So I saw Roy from Abe's Hidden Treasures and asked him if he'd planned, if they'd planned on doing food trucks that night with their stuff down there. And he said he hadn't thought of it. He says, but if you want me to look into it, I'd be more than happy to, so.
We're going to do a night market, Heritage Flight may do the sugar waffles during the night market at the fireworks. And then, I believe they're doing it by Kristen's family, they might stop us, so you shouldn't have to pay.
For the Heritage Flight, do you pay for the trucks? Or do they pay you?
They pay us.
Okay.
Yeah, thousands of people go to that.
Oh, no baseball, we're bringing ice.
And it's over a long period of time.
Slushy cone, whatever you call it.
Well, listen, guys, I'm the one who negotiates contract. I'm not trying to put it out of list, but we, last year was expensive. Spad Metals gave about seven thorns of that. This contract itself, if you guys want to put on a show like you did last year, is going to be fifteen to twenty thousand probably for the contract.
The only problem.
We've got no new companies coming here that's going to give us a little discount because they haven't come in before. So we got American, we got Rosie.
If, if you get too much money put there, you're going to have too long a show. And basically, we could slow that show down, put a little more airtime between the shots, and still have a decent show and not really spend, what did we spend, fifteen thousand last year?
Something along those.
Sixteen, I think it was.
How much?
Sixteen.
It's on here, it's fifteen.
Besides that, you're probably still going to have your donation.
Well, I would rather just keep twenty. Doesn't mean we're going to expend twenty, but at the same time, if that contract is fifteen thousand and one cent, we have to go back and redo everything and do legislation. So, it's either a little bit or not.
That is probably, I mean, seriously, some of the best money this town's spent, I think, in a long time. I mean, obviously, roads and stuff are.
And there's fifteen thousand in there now, so it's either twenty or seventeen.
As far as showcasing New Carlisle and giving a boost to all the businesses in that area, I mean, you know, Dollar, you know, not Dollar General, um, Arrow Queen was.
I don't like my idea of a fireworks fight.
No.
That is a fantastic idea.
It's on your shoulders, I'm done.
You're just going to leave me hanging like that?
It's all yours, I'm done.
I ain't doing it.
If the fight's on the west side of town.
All right, so let's get going, um.
That's all you want.
Yeah, so we can get out of here.
What I'm, what I'm looking for is I got to make some boxes to put in the stores for donations.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that's going to cost yet. That's why I said seventeen. We still, with that, with that two thousand dollars, having a plastic box built for, made for donations, then I want to pass the bucket around the night of the fireworks for donations for next year.
Seventeen is fine, I think.
Seventeen.
I mean, if, I'm fine with seventeen unless Randy really thinks we need twenty.
I think we should do seventeen.
Does me and Bill do seventeen called that?
Seventeen, I'm fine with seventeen.
I'm, I can compromise.
Seventeen.
Yeah, because you're doing it.
Seventeen five.
You're doing it.
I'm, I'm, other than that, I'm done.
He said seventeen five.
So I hear eighteen.
I got ahead of it.
I hear seventeen five. You'll give me seventeen five? Come on, I compromise, you compromise.
Seventeen.
What do you think, Bill?
We have to spend it.
Whatever you want.
No, what do you, what do you think?
I just don't want to spend too much and have this come back and haunt us.
Oh, that ain't going to come back. Spending seventeen thousand dollars ain't going to be the thing that comes back and haunts us of this.
Yeah, it'll be the.
Maybe, well, we're going to get to the pools it's going to take, but it's.
No, what, no, I wasn't talking about the pool, I was talking about the other, the other building.
Oh, that building?
I mean, you know, Dale said he would help.
In that moment when you think you're on the same page?
Yeah, I know, it's like, full building, dad.
He said, I needed thirty, and you just now wrote forty in the sky in five minutes.
I know, I know, and.
Welcome to the world of inconsistency.
You want to help this year.
Do what?
You want to help this year, what do you think?
I'm just waiting for the clarification, I'm just waiting.
Seventeen five, we'll compromise.
Linda?
He said twenty, it says fifteen, seventeen five is in the mill.
Come on, Bill, jump in there.
Seventeen five.
Seventeen.
Sold!
Seventeen five? Boom, seventeen five.
Boom! Yeah, it's a man with a gray shirt.
Sold to the man with the white neck.
Right.
Only for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Oh, with the white neck.
Okay, lands and buildings. So, we're, actually have eight minutes left, so.
Okay.
Lands and buildings. So this is where, let me pull my capital up.
Lands and buildings.
Because I don't think we accounted for this yet, did we, Howie?
No. No.
Christmas decorations.
Oh. Oh, no, that's the only thing that is not in there.
Peer pressure is horrible, isn't it?
So here's the other kickback, and, and Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers, but.
What?
We are thinking about getting ten thousand dollars worth of Christmas decorations for our lightness.
Why are you mentioning my name?
Because that might be a compromise off if we, if we don't get that.
I don't know what you're even talking about, okay?
You've got, we've got your opinion on what, which ones to get.
He just showed me what he, he liked.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know, like, I.
I didn't pick them, he picked them.
I didn't know how involved you were in.
No, no, he just showed me what he thought he would like to see.
God, I forgive your name being mentioned in that, right after.
While he's finding that, I'm going to verify that those will be suffice on that full.
Oh, okay.
Weight-wise, they're twenty-eight and forty pounds.
Really?
Let me ask a dumb question. Sometime back, we had a discussion about putting the banners with the servicemen's pictures on them, on the poles.
Yeah.
Where did that go? I mean, it was talked about.
Okay, that was, that's the last CIP. The first guy who did it was too much. Now, I think Ms. Agelson was working with Chrissy to get a little cheaper price.
Was, was there some discussion about the fact that poles wouldn't have, wouldn't handle that?
They'll fit now, because they just, they put some on for Heritage Flight, and they were fine.
Yeah.
Well, my thought was that, you know, if the people were paying for those banners.
But we need, yeah, okay.
Then we would have no expense.
Yeah, we do, we have wages to put manpower, put a motor.
Put them up.
Fuel, but just, that's something costs, we're not going to focus on that. But how's that, how's that, how's that going to work? Because we're going to have, have starting money somewhere here.
Well, I still like the idea of, of doing that.
Derek, what's your opinion? Derek, I did it again, I did it.
Told you.
I did do it.
Derek!
I'm sorry. What is your opinion? Because you're going to be managing that, probably managing that project. Nightlight, little banners on the.
Servicemen.
On the thing.
I mean, I like the idea, I've seen them, we did them in Pearborn.
Do you know how much money they caught, they spent on that?
They were a lot. I don't remember a dollar amount, it was a little long.
Well, West Milton has it, I don't know what they pay.
I mean, I'm, you know, I think our cost would be minimal compared to the cost.
That's what I'm saying, is how do you, how do you want to charge it? The people going to pay for it? Because if that pays, we'll just like the payment, we'll just put the order in once we get the payment from them, therefore we have no upfront.
People want a banner, then they would sign up and we would have company.
We order it.
So we could make a flyer, put it up, like, here's what it is, here's an example, you pay this much.
That way, we don't have to really earmark it.
Get us this.
Buy a verdict to come through, there's a flyer, they fill it out, submit the payment, then we.
Right.
So is everyone okay with that? They just have them prepaid and then boom, we're done?
Yeah.
That way, we give it to Chrissy.
What were we talking about, two hundred dollars, I think.
I don't think it was that much, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't think it was that much. I think forty dollars was porting out, but don't quote me on that.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Our banners for, which, you know, ours were only designed to be up for a couple days, or a week a year, but, uh, those were like thirty-five, forty bucks.
Let me ask you this, can Chrissy Smith do those?
So that's something we can work on ourselves, come up with a flyer, a design, or whatever.
So I talked to, and.
Okay, we'll get to the, we'll, yeah, figure it out. Since we're not, we don't need to know upfront, then we can just do, I like the idea of the program, but having them just cut it, it is no different. When we have the, someone comes and gets, gets a tree from us, they pay for that advance.
Yeah.
You know, so it'd be the same concept.
Okay.
That way, it's the burden's off us. Council, okay with that? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so lands and buildings. This is the one that, you know, this is the city building renovation coming out of. So when we look at the CIP, um, right now, we did up that to, um, did it, did it, did it? There is the furniture for the new city building on that one, I actually reduced from twenty thousand to ten thousand. So I took half of that off.
Where are you at again?
Lands and buildings, capital.
Capital?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't I see capital?
It's in the second page.
Oh, I see it. Capital.
It says government, lands and building, government center, right under materials and supplies.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what we did is we broke this up. So lands and buildings is seventy-nine thousand five hundred, and that's going to cover the asbestos removal at Madison Street School, forty thousand. Demo and addition at the city garage for twenty-five thousand, and two thousand five hundred in hand tools. So that constitutes, that's seventy-nine to five thousand, the four hundred sixty thousand is for the building renovation. We had earmarked for thirty of that. I did put additional twenty in because we have a wiring quote to wire. Some of this stuff that I could do without putting it out to bid is actually going to save us around fifteen, twenty percent markup. So that additional twenty thousand is because I did not put the wiring in with the bid. We'll have a separate company come in and do that, that'll save us money.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
What you're saying here on the bid has already come back from the architect.
No, we haven't got an estimate back, that is our estimate that we've earmarked.
I don't know how you can go off of that if you don't know what he's got.
We've got to put something in there. And when he was sitting there, the architect quoted this in the building, no more than four fifty. If that number sticks, great. If not, but we got to put something in the capital to account for that. The same number we discussed last year.
You're gambling there.
Well, it doesn't matter if it comes back at three hundred thousand or six hundred thousand. You got to have a number in there to start. If it's three hundred thousand dollars, we know we got enough paid cash. If it's six hundred thousand dollars, we come back to you guys, say, how do you want to move forward?
Right.
You have four hundred thousand dollars here, four hundred thirty, and again, while I mentioned the Twin Creek stuff, you have about two fifty there. You know, so it's just creative financing of how to do it, but you have to have a number in there to start to come to an end.
If you, if you write a budget for home and you have an emergency and you take, you go back in and amend it and don't go on vacation. You know, but you have to have something there to start the plan, how you're going to spend your money.
Questions?
Mm-hmm.
If you take this budget, basically, where we started, without any of the changes that we had, you add the million-dollar surplus, where are we coming out at the bottom? Do we have a number? That what we're going to.
End figure.
Yeah, an end figure.
Oh, for the general fund? Yeah.
No, of the, of the budget.
Right now, as it.
Right now.
Four hundred thousand.
We're going to have four hundred thousand left.
That is the projection. You pull it back up. After I've done all this stuff.
Just.
Ending general fund balance with the changes we have done, it was at like five hundred when I started, but then we did some things. Your ending general fund balance.
And this is still holding the Twin Creek fund out there?
What number you got?
Four sixty-four, one ninety-nine, twenty-six.
Yeah, that's what it is, minus the forty thousand dollars from the pool that's not accounted in that. So four hundred and forty, around.
Okay, but this is still holding that Twin Creek money out there?
That's a completely, that's not even in the general fund. That is a completely different fund. So right now, paying for the, if that, we expended all that money for the capital, I mean, for the city building renovation, four thirty, everything as is, we are projected to have four hundred and.
Four twenty-four, one ninety-nine, twenty.
There it is. Four hundred twenty-four.
So if we put another hundred and fifty thousand in there from Madison Street School, we could take that down this year.
I would not recommend that.
I know you wouldn't, but I did.
That is up to your council, but you're actually, you're, you're, um, that project ain't going to get done this year.
Fine.
Because there's a lot that works to go into it.
We'll have to go out to bid.
Benny's got to.
I mean, even if we got the.
And you are, you got a lot, that's why I have stressed many times this evening, this city is underdoing a lot of investment this year. I have no problem with investing for that Madison Street School. We have forty thousand dollars prepping it for the asbestos to get removed, that happens first. And I say, like I told you on the phone, I think we should really aim for that for 2021. Because once we get done with the city building, that revenue should back back up.
Spike.
And another thing with that is, trying to get, trying to get that done by other means. Um, I will be writing a letter to the county, seeking money to get that done on their behalf.
With that money they're getting?
Um, they recently gave City Springfield a million dollars for a parking garage. I've been talking with a county administrator. I have the county strategic plan in my inbox, and I'm going to force my letter around that. I'm also working with the, we're working with the county as well for the land bank. I agree with you, and I think we're on the same page, that it needs to come down. I think that we're making progress on it by spending the, the money to get the asbestos out, and then earmark and really shoot for that 2021 to get that building down. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, aiming for 2021. But we have got a lot of, we've got a lot on our plate for 2020.
Yeah.
A lot. Shelterhouse, city building, medic purchases, investment in the planning and zoning department.
That's our shining star right there.
Yeah. Who we haven't heard from yet. He, he wanted to go last, we're going to honor that for him.
I only have about an hour, so we'll be.
You know, so that's something, if council wants to decide, if you guys want to do that. I work as a threat, we all do. However, if you guys want to discuss it, um, I, like I said, I think that it's very ambitious for us. Because here's the thing with that, Mr. Cook, save that building, the vending rail admissions come back at five hundred and thirty thousand. We can still pay cash for that. Does that make sense? We can still go back and reallocate our funds and pay cash for that. And still come out with about three hundred thousand. Now we're going to put a hundred and fifty thousand, take a Madison Street School down. So that's just where I'm at with it. It's up to you guys. What is your opinion, Debbie?
You know, my, my thinking is that that building's been sitting there vacant for as many years. We've been putting it off as long as we can, and now that we see the light at the end of the tunnel, we need to get it down because we don't know what next year's going to bring.
Well, I do know what next year's going to bring, and that is hopefully another banner year of income tax collections, and, you know, an ending fund balance that that's healthy. You know, because there's another, goes the elephant in the room, and that's called that water tower. We have to do the hydraulics study, and if they're going to force us to take that down, or if you guys decide to save it, you guys decide to save that. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
At least.
To keep it up?
Yeah.
So, you know, um.
Three thirty?
No.
Well, we've, we've done the research, so, you know, so there is just a lot of ambitious projects.
To keep it in service.
All, all due respect to all you sevens, we're going to do how you guys want us to do.
We'll talk.
Again, my recommendation is, you're doing a lot of fast-forward thinking and improvements for 2020, including work on prepping the Madison Street School to come down by the asbestos removal. And then you get it down in 2021, you get it done next year.
Well, if, I'm saying if, if we decided to move forward with the school, or regardless, whether it was this year or next year, it's got to, even though you've got, from what I think, understand, is a decent price to get it down, but it starts to go out for bid, correct?
And it does go for bid, and that price was just a general.
Right. No, I know, but what I'm saying is, how long, that, that process alone, it takes a little while, right?
Well, we've got a very limited staff, and we have a lot of big projects on us this year.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, what's, I mean, to do something out for bid, I'm assuming it takes a couple months?
At minimum.
Start to finish?
That's not including specs.
Okay.
Well, I think since we are going to do the remi- re-
Remodeling.
No.
Renovation.
No, taking out the asbestos.
Oh, removing.
Prepping. Yeah. And, um, that's a start. And then we wouldn't have that expense for the next year. And we do have a lot of projects this year, so I'm kinda for, you know, taking out the asbestos and then going forward for next year.
I get really nervous once that general fund, I mean, I was happy at five hundred thousand, now it's down to four twenty or four forty, that's when I get really nervous.
If we spend everything on-
If you spend everything, yes, but still, you have to allocate as you are. It doesn't mean we are, but you have to, when you plan for things, you have to plan for the worst case scenario.
You're going, yeah.
You know, with that being said, you know, with the wastewater plant being so low, if something happens there, you know, we're gonna have to put more debt onto the wastewater plant or pull from the general fund. You know, um, so, and it, but if, and another flip side of this is too, if something major happens in the water department, and we're allocating that whole repayment in one year, the general fund balance is what it is because there's a hundred and something thousand coming in from the water department that should only be twenty-eight. But since that doing good, it's coming into the general fund. Well, God forbid something happens massively in that water plant, we're gonna have to redo and not put all that money in there for this year. So like I said, there's a lot of big things on for this year that the public should see and appreciate that, hell, we are doing, heck, we are doing stuff.
Oh, yeah.
But all due respect, that's just, that's just my opinion on that.
I just need to cut our losses with the building downtown, sell it, take the school down, let's build over there.
So you want, that makes no sense to me, sir.
We mean, don't make no sense. You own the property.
Do you know how much it costs to build commercial?
Okay. You gonna have to have an extravagant building.
I need a building to house seven-
Seven people.
Full-time people and storage and all kinds of stuff. And if you think you're gonna build from scratch, under six hundred, whatever, where you got, I mean, that's, 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 that's a two million dollar project right there.
All right, well, let's, I mean, let's just go down the lines and see what everybody else thinks about the school. What do you say, Linda?
Get rid of the asbestos and stick it out.
Get rid of the asbestos. We'll look at other avenues.
Uh, same, because one more year, at least we're working towards it.
I'll agree, especially with, you know, and I know you've been on the county commissioners a lot lately, and, you know, I've been reading some articles where they've been getting some money here and there, and you know it's gonna get sent to Springfield unless we keep on them. So hopefully.
I'm also asking for some money for a building renovation too, but I don't wanna get everyone hopes up.
Right, so, no, I want it down just as, not as much as Mr. Cook does, but I, I'm fine waiting at least another year.
Now I'll be more transparent with that statement. And I'm trying to debate, is it, do I ask them for money to tear down the school? Do I ask them for money for the renovation of our downtown? And I asking, I'm thinking that with my head because if I was commissioner, I'd be more likely to give money for a building renovation because that's, people are in there, they're using it, the citizens benefit from it.
Like their partners.
Right.
There's other avenues that the county can provide to help with the land bank.
But that just frees up money for us to knock that down.
Oh, yeah, if the county comes in and gives us two hundred thousand dollars for that building renovation, that's a bonus.
Yeah.
Plus, Lyndon, Lyndon Peggy are gonna win that for us.
Oh, don't.
For the HGTV. When are they gonna decide on that?
I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
I was just curious.
They're supposed to air everything in twenty twenty-one, so they'll have to be doing all the work this summer.
Okay.
We know how Mr. Cook feels.
Yeah, we know where I'm at.
Yeah, because I wasn't trying to-
I say, get rid of the asbestos and see what county commissioners do or won't do or-
You know where I'm at.
I know, that's why I'm not asking.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Howie. Was, was Ms. Agelson?
No, we just, I asked her what her opinion was.
I didn't hear it.
Same as-
So they're sticking with the forty thousand. Okay. Netherlands and building thing, the ten thousand dollars for Christmas decorations. What is council's opinion on that?
I love it, because every year, people were commenting on how shabby ours looks.
I have to agree.
And these are decorations that are gonna go on our light poles? Do they have a little more information about that?
Well, as I say, our roof lights aren't shabby. Is it more the Christmas tree?
No, the wreath, like the wreaths with the-
Yeah, they're just a plain non-lit wreath, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did get a quote from Ron for ten thousand for, I forget how many it was. I'm just gonna verify, I'm gonna give the cut sheet for those poles to that manufacturer and say, can we hang twenty-eight pounds off the side? Doesn't sound like a lot, but I just wanna make sure before we put it on a, a pole like that, does-
Yeah.
And then if they're good, I'll-
That stuff is expensive. They always show me the catalog, that commercial, it's not cheap.
It, it was just a wreath with no lights. It, it just didn't stand out.
Sure, sure. And I, I get that. I think there was some ones that Ron showed me with silhouette and snowmen. There was packages that weighed forty-some pounds. Is that something that was gonna sit at the foot?
The, no, the one he showed me, it was a, it was a big wire lit Christmas gift that goes over top of the globe. So the globe lights up the Christmas present.
Okay, yeah, that was forty-eight pounds. So I'll just verify that it will work with our pole.
Right. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's, again, it's, you know, you mentioned it earlier. I mean, I know we can't go and light every pole with nice decorations or a brand new pole or, or, you know, whatever. But I mean, these little steps of showing that, you know, you're paying these taxes, we're making improvements.
Yes. I'm ready to go home.
Back to you, Ms. Bridge.
You ate them all. You didn't even bring me in.
It was a contest between her and April, I think.
Hey, Howie, Howie, that ten, did we even put that in here? Is that about ten-four under the ten? No, because we know we already spent-
I'm getting hungry.
You had a ten there.
Five seventy-one, bro.
Well, we're waiting, that had nothing to do with that.
We're waiting on you to finish up the strip scene.
The strip scene.
Yeah.
The strip state.
Oh. You added twelve.
Right now, they're sixty-seven, five.
Your neighbors.
Say seventy-nine?
Um, yeah, it was twelve thousand, yes. Maybe we already did. Yeah, maybe we already did.
I'm sure he'd make tacos in exchange for his water, twelve hundred dollar water bill.
That's unfortunate. He talked to me about it. Next fall, store lock and this. Had a toilet upstairs running, seventy-nine, what, seventy-nine and thousand?
Hi, it's twelve thousand, not ten, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is it still wrong?
Mr. Shock himself.
I know him. I knew him when I did real estate.
All right. So anybody else have any discussion on that?
Nope.
No.
Move on.
Moving on.
I don't know what you guys do.
You said twelve.
Are you okay with that?
No, I wouldn't say anything, so.
Okay, well, heck.
Move on.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
No what?
On that.
Oh, he said no.
I've been hitting this thing all day with my neat hat.
Oh, is it you making all that noise? Well, just don't buy these when we replace tables in the shelter house.
No problem.
Okay. Carry on.
So we're good with the twelve?
Yes. Everybody else okay?
Yeah, okay.
General fund miscellaneous, the, um, miscellaneous items, postage meter fee, state autogrant fees, those are something, a lot of that stuff, we just, we kind of have to do. My code, we're gonna, code occupation update, that's when I do the prior year ordinance, and they get online the merit of the bill. Does anyone have any questions over anything from miscellaneous?
Hope.
No, okay. General fund transfers, that sixty thousand, we had talked about for the pools, that's going for sixty.
Bless you.
And there's other two transfers, the seventy-one thousand nine twenty-three and the ninety-five thousand seventy-eight, or one is for the general obligation debt and one for Twin Creek's debt. So that leaves our general ending fund balance, once we go to make this up, at a projected four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And I will say, with as much as the general fund's taken on this year with the investments, that's actually unhappy.
But-
Depending on the cost of the debt. Okay, so with that, further ado.
Oh, okay, no, no, that's fine. You know what I was gonna bring up, right?
You do it right, buddy.
Well, that's good, you don't wanna know me anyway.
He's a case, I'm not gonna say, he's a nice guy. Right after finance. Page four.
Yep, got it.
Got it.
All right, so this, uh, always, we've always had a planning budget, but, um, looking at history, um, this is, this is pretty, this is not very, this is a brand-new apartment, most of it is, um, we have, currently do have part-time workers. So these wages are going to cover my wages as well as two part-time workers. With that, with that covered, there's a part-time worker who's able to cover time to Friday.
And you'll be full-time.
Uh, so with these, with the Medicare and everything that's, that's there, uh, with the part-timers, we don't have as much, uh, expenses. If you do notice on the medical insurance, it's only a thousand dollars. I do not have insurance. So on medical, which is, at least that's part of the, so that's one sixty-nine, sixty-four. Moving down to training, travel, transportation. It is very important to me for, for the best, to be trained, um, stay current. There's not a lot of training offered. Not bad in association, based on the logistics that seem to weigh, um, they are the best, so, uh, in this training and the general fund, the four thousand dollars, uh, well, of course, one should be, uh, the talent training. Plus, they have medical intervention facilities. Uh, the zoning ordinance, you see there, the line there, the zero there, uh, so this will be by code rights, rewrites, uh, self, I have the experience, that's sensitive experience in zoning, cost of maintenance code. So we're going to be a lot, um, enhanced, so, um, so that is the training transportation, so down to the contractual.
Contractual bar.
Uh, community aid services, so that's basically at three thousand dollars to the, uh, the maintenance of facilities, so this is a big one. So we have seventy-five thousand dollars on this line. This is maintenance facilities, uh, we are looking at renaming this to community building. So what these funds will do is fund projects involving code enforcement and, uh, community, um, as far as costing demos. They could go toward, uh, I had, we're in Fairborn, we did a community living permit, so we gained, funded that through our C B D teams. So what we do with those is we had, you basically had tools, we had basic power tools, um, electric, we had, uh, two load controllers, um, and residents, just to do the entry, could come in violation, so no calls. So they would, we would give them, um, in this program, not only, like, we have ladders, wheel barrels, we'll have all this stuff to have, so, uh, we'll be like set hours, we have two days of relief that will, will block hours, we can, we can run by volunteers or- Very successful, people love it, so, you know, so not only are we going out there, um, our, the guys obviously, they're, they're good at, because that's a funding violation. So not only, you know, can we identify violations, but we also provide the, you know, help correction. In the past, I have gotten donations in actual, uh, for ownership, uh, from my, my personal work in the days, uh, doing white primer, white paint, and we would offer that, and that's pretty, so, like, say they need some touch-ups outside, um, we offer that, and then, you know, also, possible, so, um, so, really, for, for a lot of violations that maybe some people can't correct, because they don't have, is free. So it is a really good program, um, we'll have, you know, some type of contract, which basically says, you know, it's free of cost, but, um, say, it gets stolen, or, you know, they're not returning, you know, basically, for, uh, It's always gonna be an access, something, but, uh, these are tools and these are equipment, equipment itself, um, we can take donations, and, you know, if it's a good upgrade, the mower, just, just put a heck of a mower, the mower works fine, we can take that donation and make sure that's offered, so, you know, so, it's, it's a great program, so, so this will come out of that as well. I have extensive experience in demo shows, um, Fairborn, we get a lot of demo shows, for special and commercial, um, so this is just, seventy-five doesn't go along like in the bottom of demo shows. Now, I'm gonna be working close with, uh, the land bank in Springfield, um, it's a great, uh, program that they have, uh, it's waiting for us to, you know, alleviate some of our costs, uh, to afford this, so, there's a lot there, a lot out there. Maintenance of equipment, um, so that's, could be toward that, uh, those, um, those, that equipment and tooling shit, it could be, um, just your general, like, we have, um, just, um,
Could be anything, you say, you have a, your printer goes down, anything, I mean, it's equipment that's used for the actual department. Handheld, E P S, you have to do that repair, those printers, um, map door that you're gonna have, brakes, I mean, we can get that stuff, so, that's basically, it's just a catch-all, really, for anything that requires maintenance.
The next line, computer software, hardware, um, so we currently don't have a type of, we don't, we don't have any.
No, no.
Uh, so, um, a code enforcement software, it's gonna help them track their violations, track notices, uh, we've all had history information in there. Um, I, I've used several software, uh, manufacturers, and, um, I've got one in mind, so that would, that would go on that, usually those are, uh, you know, cloud-based, not the actual, small, but it's, it's, you know, the, 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 you're, uh, the, 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 uh, legal advertising, so that's gonna be for, uh, so it, it could be for, Well, that could be for any more, uh, bro, like, or legal ad.
If you have to.
That, that's any, like, if he, like, the planning board, V D A, anytime they meet, there has to be legal advertising going on, man, yeah.
What if they have absent homeowners?
So-
Absent homeowners.
You know, person has a house.
That, that'll just be like a mailing that we-
Oh, that won't be illegal, okay.
So the planning board, anytime they meet, like, if he has a planning board or board in the middle of the field, meeting our code state, you gotta send a letter out to three hundred people, then you have to legal add it to it, so it's no different when we legal add to your council meetings.
Uh, did we get the membership use and publications, the same thing as memberships for myself and, and our code working guys, so this will cover, um, any of the, uh, associations I work with, and be associated with. Office supplies, operational supplies, that's just gonna be our, it's our daily operational, uh, office supplies, uh, uniforms, uh, personal safety, uh, we, we're at seven fifty, uh, it's important, I think, for code guys to have good footwear, uh, and definitely to be identified when they're out in the field. So, you know, they'll have, uh, T-shirts, you know, clearly marked up, they're a vested employee, not someone, you know, marking the neighborhoods, uh, so I, I feel that's pretty important. Fuel, we did have one vehicle that would be shared, um, that's a vehicle that we have, so the gas use will go up compared to what it has been in the past, um, in the past twenty, thirty hours a week with that, you know, for, for, uh, super energy. Uh, capital outlay, we got a twenty-two thousand, uh, so what this is, the capital outlay and the miscellaneous, these are higher because we're basically, we're starting from scratch. We do not have computer, apps and iPads for these positions, so we're, we are starting from scratch. So next year, these, obviously, the, uh, this land will be as high, uh, and also, uh, G I S, uh, we do not have a G I S, um, nothing that we have really in the city is G I S, you know, as far as site plans and, or utilities and everything, so this is a, uh, this would be a chance if we could get this G I S, and it could be shared between all of our parks, between wastewater, um, street departments, water, um, to be able to start locating and connecting all the, uh, city, uh, stuff, so, you know.
Which we are way behind the bull, the bull one.
Very, very.
Very behind the bull one.
So right now, we're looking at a two ninety-two, six hundred total planning expense. At this time, I'll take, any questions, please, go ahead, keep going, you know?
Meaning the balance, you guys good? And when you ask Derek questions, I just ask you guys about the funds, because on my, on next council meeting, we'll, we'll be going to executive session, and that, that's the opportunity for council to really get in there and really talk to them about the funds.
A lot of your questions I heard tonight, I have lots of, some discussions, uh, this, uh, budget relating, that, you know, I have, you can ask us for that, just like, first question, if you have, you have to do this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna drag it anymore, but overall, I mean, this is probably one of the more, one of the things I'm most excited about this year, this whole new approach, this entire city, so, I'm thrilled.
Well, now we have Derek in there, hopefully that explains a little bit better why I wanna go the different avenues with that Madison Tree School, because there's so many available resources for that school, so many resources.
There's, there's lots of funds out there, lots of grants, um, I hate to see wasted direct money, and, uh, you know, the county is limited because county and whole population is not, they don't get much. Green County, just in the city of Fairborn alone, we got five hundred thousand dollars just for C B D, we got two hundred and fifty for chip, I mean, we had a big pot of money because of the population was larger, uh, and a lot of our other units probably simply paid to take it, but here in Park County, they don't, they, they get a fraction of that amount. So we are, Springfield gets their own, so Springfield does get, they'll get their own, so, uh- own, so Springfield does get allocated their own, so they do end up getting some, but.
I think there's $200,000 split amongst the eligible communities in Clark County. Springfield is bigger than Fairborn.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Springfield's an entitled.
Yes, Springfield gets their own, yeah, they're entitled, they get their, they get their, they get their grants directly from the state. We, ours comes through the county, and then the county can give it off to, but as long as we have projects and we have things on books to show them that, hey, this money's not going to go waste, we have a better chance of getting as much, and not always do the other communities use that money, because you know, county seat in Green County, they used to send hundreds of thousands of dollars back to the county, so.
All right, any questions on the planning and zoning budget? Concerns with any finances on the planning and zoning?
Nope.
Are we good, council?
Yep.
Okay, I think we're done through the budget, anything, Debbie, you have anything extra? April, anything extra for the council? Ladies in the back, anything extra?
I have one more, Mr. Bridge.
Oh, you do? Thank you.
Um, I'll probably be like the, the bad guy for bringing this up, but I'm going to bring it up because I'm not bashful, I have no problem doing it. I wanted to ask, I know it's been brought up before, does anybody want to entertain council getting a raise? I'm not talking anything drastic, I'm talking.
No.
No.
Okay, no?
We're standing up for it. Only two out of the five, two out of the seven.
And the only reason I say that is I'm speaking solely for myself, I can't speak for anybody up here, I've been in council eight years and council hasn't had a raise since, I think, 2004.
I don't know.
I don't know what it is, but it's long.
If you guys voted in, it takes some time to come in session.
Right, I just, I just figured I'd ask, I mean, me personally, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I also know that that's a touchy situation for some people to even think about agreeing to.
And I'm for it. One of the reasons why is I wasn't even sure I was going to run this time because my retirement penalized me for working in Oakhurst. Because I'm on Medicare, they used to pay for my supplemental insurance, which was 337 dollars a month, now after taxes, I'm getting 341, so.
Here's, here's what I was.
She, she, no, she, her situation is a little bit.
The only thing I, what I was thinking was is, if it was, even if it all being entertained, you know, I thought, you know, we get paid monthly, $50, if it was raised $50 per person per month, that's $4,200 a year, if you went to 100, obviously it would be 84, so, I mean, if not, it's not, I can't receive it, you know, I mean.
The other bad part about that situation.
I'm just saying for my two cents, I've been in council for eight years, I pour my heart into the city, but I'll continue to do so if not.
The only, the only thing I wanted to say was the fact that if you put a raise through, that will not be effective until the new council comes in 22, they would be the first people to receive it. Nobody on the existing council would be eligible.
I don't think it's written like that, I think it starts with the, waits until the new, and that, once that new, then everyone gets, I don't know, I haven't looked at that legislation, but I read it, this came up a while ago, and I pulled the legislation on it. You know what, I shouldn't have said anything, I really don't know.
It's all right.
I'm sorry, I do apologize, because I don't know if it goes, it goes against everyone or the news.
It would be, our three seats are up in the beginning of 22, we would be the only, or that person that comes on to take our place, or if we choose to run again, would be the only three. At that point, the rest of you would not get that raise till two years after that, so it would be 24.
Okay.
So if you put a raise into effect while you're in office, you cannot receive that raise until you run again and are reelected.
Okay, right.
That's, that is how the raise is built, so it's okay, you know, you, you put it into effect and nobody right now gets it, but when you, when your term comes and you run again, that's when you'll get the raise if you get reelected.
Okay.
So you're voting for, for them three?
I'm kidding them.
Well, they won't even, they won't get the raise, they won't get the raise right now either.
Unless they get reelected, right.
Again, I just, I just wanted to ask and see what everybody thought.
While you're currently elected, it doesn't, you don't get it, receive it till you get reelected.
Right.
Okay, so, well, we got our answer, so, I'm done.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, and one more thing.
Right, I'll check this down now.
One more thing, again, Mr. Bridge.
Yes.
Ms. Watson, chief, Eric, Mr. Kitco, thank you guys again for everything you guys do. I always get, I always get nervous, I mean, I think everybody does, going through this and spending money, but you, you know, with, obviously council's help, past council's help, and, and you, we've led the city down the right path so far, so I think we're in good shape.
No, we appreciate the, the kind words, we will continue on working diligently with citizens and council, but it is always a team effort, always.
Thanks for the two young ladies coming through for a dull and dry and boring session.
We need to make a motion to.
You get extra credit for spending.
Hold on.
How many hours, four hours?
Huh?
Of four.
First, second.
A first second.
Who was the second?
Bill Cook.
I got a call vote, right?
Yes.
Just, yes, yes.
Now, now, do it officially, go out.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cox. Yes. Councilman Grimm, Councilwoman Ableson Milakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Cobb, Councilman Ableson, Councilman Cook.
He said yes.